Ready Paulina? Good afternoon everyone, we're going to call and order the City Council for the City of Indio for our closed session. Can I have roll call please?
Councilmember Guitron.
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Present.
Councilmember Furman.
Present.
Mayor Protim Holmes.
Present.
Mayor Miller.
Present. At this time, we'll have public comments. Is there anybody in the queue or anybody who wishes to speak?
There are no comments.
Okay, so that will move on to adjourning to closed session to consider item 3.1 through 3.5. Ms. Attorney, City Attorney, would you please read them into record?
Absolutely. Item number 3.1 is Conference with Rural Property Negotiators, Government Code Section 54956.8. It is 82707 Miles Avenue, City of Indio. Negotiator is our city manager and the negotiating party is Avenue the Music and under negotiation on price and terms of payment. 3.1, Conference with Rural Property Negotiators pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.8. Property is Noble Ranch, APN 614650001 through 06. Negotiating parties are City of Indio, our city manager, and HCL Indio Land Development under negotiation on price and terms of payment. 3.3 is Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation pursuant to Paragraph 4 subdivision D of section 5.9, 549. Oh my goodness, 54956.9. Number of cases is one. Item 3.4 is Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation pursuant to Paragraph 4 subdivision D of section 54956.9. Number of cases is one. 3.5, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation pursuant to government, to Paragraph 2 of subdivision D of section 54956.9. Number of cases is one.
Mayor Protim.
You're all ready into the record.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mayor Protim, Elaine Holmes here. So I want to let you know, I'm going to recuse myself on item 3.1 due to the fact that I own property on within 500 or 1,000 feet and I have a financial interest in that property.
Thank you. We'll adjourning to closed session. She felt compelled to...
He's got their own style, yes.
She's felt compelled to say, "Wait, we should read it, right?"
Darla Brquette, I didn't call her. Are we ready? Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call the city council meeting to order for the city of Indio. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gutron?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Present.
Councilmember Furman?
Present.
Mayor Protem Holmes?
Present.
Mayor Miller?
Present.
At this time, if you could all rise, we're gonna have Jeff, Pastor Jeff Smith from Destiny Church. Give us the invocation, and then after that, we have a special person to do our pledge.
Part of, we are thankful for every single leader that we have here. Let every heart be heard when they speak, and Father, we just thank you that you're moving, and you're gonna make our city greater than it's ever been before. We're excited for what you're doing here, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Smith. With that, we have a very special person, Rosalie Romero from Kennedy Elementary School. Rosalie is a proud third grade student at Kennedy Elementary School. As a big sister, she sets a positive example at home and work. It's hard to spread kindness and encouragement to those around her. Rosalie loves spending time with her mom and dad, and is grateful for the opportunity to be here today. Rosalie, please come up to the mic and lead us.
Okay. Please stand, right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you very much. Wait right there, right there. Come on. Right in the middle. Over here. Come on, this way. With that, we'll move on to item number four now. It says the city attorney's report on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, city attorney. With that, we'll move on to item number five, which are presentations. We have quite a few of them this evening. The first one for presentations will be presentation by Shadow Hills High School Interact Club. Who's coming up?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Savannah Bella, and I'm a senior at Shadow Hills High School. I'm also the president of the Interact Club. For the past year, I've been working with American Cancer Society. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm here today to respectfully ask city council members to consider the American Cancer Society school. In the outdoors, secondhand smoke can be dangerous. Just by being near someone, smoking outside can raise the risk of serious health concerns like cancer, heart disease, and stroke. According to local surveys conducted by Viva, eighty-six percent of Indio residents say they are bothered by secondhand smoke in the outdoor areas, and it's a clear sign that community needs a change. Smoke-free outside, outdoor areas help protect public health, reduce litter, support people who want to quit, and set a positive example for our youth, like me and my classmates. And today, I wanna do a quick presentation of just what we, American Cancer Society has gathered within Indio. They have been within the community, talking to various individuals. Like recently, we've conducted a presentation with council manager, council member Gutron, Benjamin Gutron, sorry. And today, I'm just here to do a quick presentation on that. So why is it important to have smoke-free outdoor spaces? Everyone has the right to breathe smoke-free air. We have beautiful public parks and beautiful public areas, and with the expansion of downtown Indio, its use is needed and necessary to continue to build this community. But how can you do so when there is outdoor smoke, and it is just not a friendly environment? So, secondhand smoke is a very dangerous thing, even in open air. I mean, there's a common misconception that it's an I mean, there's a common misconception that it's in open air, then it kind of spreads around, but that isn't the reality. Like, it can still harm members. It contains over 7,000 chemicals, and 17 are known to be carcinogens. In apartments and condos, smoke doesn't stop at the walls. It travels through vents, windows, and walls, and shared spaces. Residents, including children and seniors, who are most susceptible to diseases and harm, can be involuntarily exposed in their own homes. As of April 2025, 101 municipalities in California have enacted laws regulating smoking in private units and multi-unit housing. Fifty-one have adopted strongest, the strongest policies requiring all multi-unit housing properties with one or two more, or more units to be 100% smoke-free indoors, including prohibition on e-cigarettes and marijuana use. The city of Riverside have adopted smoke-free multi-housing units, just an example of that. Some just stats with local residents is eighty-six percent are bothered when adult is smoking in a public area and while children are present. Eighty-six of Indio residents say they have problems with breathing in another person's tobacco smoke outside, including e-cigarettes. Seventy-five percent say that tobacco litter in outdoor areas is very much a problem. So I hope today's presentation can encourage you guys to make Indio have a commitment to be smoke-free. The City of Indio General Plan 202040 highlights supporting smoke-free multi-family housing and to protect residents from smoke, secondhand smoke. Smoke-free events, support smoke-free public events and facilities, including farmer's markets, public parks, and trails, including street fairs. It also aligns with the broader public health goal of clean air and safety within our community. Within the past couple of years, American Cancer Society has made a couple of observations within the city of Indio. They observed 17 different public locations, including parks, sidewalks, and bus stops. Twenty-five percent of those locations had people smoking. Tobacco litter was found in 65% of those sites. And multi-unit housing observations, which we observed for 14 locations, had 0% designated smoking areas, which lead to many individuals smoking wherever they want. And 29 had visible tobacco litter, and there was no ashtrays or anywhere to dispose of smoke litter properly. So what are the benefits of a smoke-free policy? It reduces litter and pollution, which I think is pretty obvious. I mean, we have such a beautiful community, and to have it be littered and full of smoke, tobacco litter such as like cigarette butts and vapes, it's just not welcoming. It models healthy behavior within our youth, which I think we are all aware about, how Riverside County has an epidemic of vaping within, you know, the youth, and it's become an issue that has been increasing for the past couple of years. And having a smoke-free policy can lower that. And it supports quitting tobacco use. I mean, if you can't smoke in outdoors, it makes it just harder to want to do it anyways. It promotes equity and protects everyone's right to breathe clean air. Some community support and voices. I just wanted to present a couple key statements. Karma Ramirez, an Indio resident, says that having to move around in public areas, that she has often, she has to often move around in public areas because smoke is bad for our tolerance, and it's quite it's around in a lot of the public areas. Enrique Torres states that his wife, who has asthma, her issues have increased because of tobacco usage and smoke areas. And the smell's not that great, and it just makes parks and public areas not a pleasant moment. And I just want to state a couple things. So within my work with American Cancer Society, I have also conducted observations, especially at our county fair, the date festival. And it is very discouraging as a youth to see tobacco litter on the ground in areas that I want to be in. I mean, I know a lot of my peers are discouraged to be in public parks because it's a common occurrence. And hopefully today, this can hopefully change your mindset or encourage you to be a supporter of our cause. I also do have a folder including my American Cancer Society representative, Melissa Coriel, with a model of a multi-unit housing ordinance and a couple other key information that I would love to share with you guys.
Thank you. You can give that to the clerk. Can you let us know who you have with you and what brought you here besides?
Well, I've worked with, I'm the president of the Interact Club, and we work closely with the Indio Rotary Club. See if you see all this blue right behind me. They're my big supporters. And then Melissa here, she is our American Cancer representative, who's been helping me along this stream.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and we'll take into account what you have for us. Would you like to say a couple words while you're here, quickly?
Good evening, council. Like Savannah mentioned, I'm Melissa Coriel. I'm with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, and I've been currently working in the city of India for the last past seven, over like almost seven years. And I've met with each one of you individually, and even with some of you twice, about all the stuff that I've done here. We have several supporters that we worked through all these years, especially that we work with the Indio Cadets, Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. We've done activities with the Indio Teen Center, with Desert Health. So we do have a lot of support from the community, and we really love to see this be placed as an agenda item for smoke-free multi-unit housing and smoke-free outdoors.
Thank you. Thank you again.
I'd just like to say, as a member of the Rotary Club of Indio for 21 years, and our program outreach, the Shadow Hills High School Youth Interact Club is pretty large, and they've been consistent on doing their outreaches, and all organized by this young lady. Very minimal from the adult side, other than some guidance, and we're really impressed with them. But this is just a sample of Shadow Hills. The same applies to Indio High and even Amistad. But it's nice to see that our future is leading the charge with just a little TLC. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ben. We'll take that into account. Thank you very much for an amazing presentation. Yeah, Mr. Ortiz?
You know, I would like to see what we could do, especially right now, you know, with our community events growing in downtown. The other day, we had about 7,000 people right there in downtown, and that that smoke would linger around to those families because we are getting a little bit more concentrated in those events. You know, in the past, there wasn't that same concentration in our community events and closeness to each other. And I think now with our growing events and density of those events, we should consider some signage, especially downtown, where we have all those family events, and possibly even our parks. So if we could bring that back for an agenda item, that'd be great.
Is that something we'd like to look at?
Absolutely.
The council? Yeah. And that would be for vaping and marijuana and everything?
Yes.
Cigarettes, anything that's smoking.
But I've seen that they looked at some locations, so maybe that's something they could bring to staff and say, "Look, we looked at these locations with existing laws already on the books. How can we enhance or designate certain areas, such as the center stage for non-smoking areas or outdoor patios?" So there's some laws already in the book, but how can we enhance it to suit our community?
Yeah, sounds good.
We just need to also reinforce that with, as businesses come in, that we are doing our best to be family businesses, to be consistent with that. Because if we don't set that example, what's our efforts?
Mayor Protem?
I just, I even want to extend it to multifamily. I mean, I can't fathom living in, and we're putting together, we're building a lot of density, and I can't even fathom, you know, living next door to someone that smokes. You're right, it goes through the vents. And it's detrimental, the health effects on kids, on babies. And when you look at who's living in these apartments, there are a lot of families. So I would even like to throw that out there and consider that.
Let's see what staff brings back. We can do that. We also got to be able to enforce it, too.
Right.
This is not only part, just a portion of it, it's a part of it also, another part, too. So. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you again for your presentation, Rotary Club. I've been a longtime member of the Indio Sunrise. I know you're the Noon Club, and been there many years. So thank you for bringing the Interact Club to us and for this project. So thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item number two now, five-two, which is the presentation by Monica Vasquez of Eisenhower Health Foundation. Monica, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, Mr. City Manager. On behalf of Eisenhower Health, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you this afternoon and provide you an overview of the important work taking place at the only not-for-profit healthcare system in the Coachella Valley. My name is Monica Vasquez. I am serving as Director of Community Giving for the Foundation Office at Eisenhower Health. And with me this afternoon is Mr. Michael Landis, President of the Foundation, and Mrs. Norma Castaneda, a board member. I'd like to direct your attention to your screens. Eisenhower Health has grown significantly over the years. Today, we have 13 locations spanning from the high desert and now to the east end of the valley. Across those locations, we now operate 100 clinics, providing care in areas such as primary care, cardiology, orthopedics, oncology, and many others. These clinics are bringing five-star quality care closer to home to thousands of residents. Most recently, in September of 2024, we proudly opened our first clinic right here in Indio, marking just the beginning of a long-term expansion into your community. Eisenhower Health is proud to be an award-winning organization, but those awards aren't about plaques on the walls. They're a testament to the hard work of our staff, the quality of our care, and the innovation we bring to the field. It reflects our commitment to excellence in everything we do, from patient care to the cutting-edge medical advancements. The city of Indio and Eisenhower Health have shared a strong relationship for decades. You might say you've been, we've been silent partners since our inception in 1971. A great example is Mr. Louis Strange, an Indio resident, whose name now you'll find etched in this very building. And his family were contracted to paint the original walls of Eisenhower Medical Center. That spirit of community partnership continues today with nearly 1,000 Indio residents employed at Eisenhower locations throughout the Coachella Valley. The new Eisenhower Primary Care Clinic in Indio is now serving over 400 patients, and practice led by Dr. Alfonso Vasquez is growing rapidly. In fact, one of our soon-to-graduate medical residents will soon join Dr. Vasquez to help expand access even further. Let me share with you the impact Eisenhower Health has had on Indio residents in just last year, from January to December of 2024. Over 19,000 Indio residents received care at Eisenhower outpatient clinics throughout the valley. More than 18,000 of your residents traveled to our Rancho Mirage campus for outpatient and inpatient services. Everything from surgery to radiation, infusion treatments, et cetera. 8,000 of them sought emergency care at our emergency department. And 192 of Indio's newest residents were born at Eisenhower's Family Birth Center. Those numbers show that Indio families are already relying heavily on us, and that's why we are actively planning additional clinics in a new urgent care facility in your city. We are committed to providing and expanding services to meet the needs of the growing community. You may have seen the Eisenhower Medical Mobile Care Unit in your streets. Every Tuesday night, in partnership with Volunteers in Medicine, a dedicated team of Eisenhower physicians, residents, and nurses provide care for individuals who are unable to travel to any of our health clinics. We are currently in the process of securing license for our mobile clinic, which we expect to obtain in the summer. Once licensed, we plan to expand our services and offer additional days to better serve our community. Already, we are meeting with Martha's Village and Kitchen and other organizations in your city who need our services. Our emergency department is the second busiest in all of Southern California, second only to USC, and yet we do not turn anyone away. We are actively working to improve efficiency and wait times because we believe every patient deserves compassionate care. We are also proud to be designated Level Four Trauma Center, with plans to advance to a Level Three in the coming months, and eventually reach Level Two status. This part of our ongoing investment is elevating the care we provide. We have over 135 residents training in multiple specialties through our Graduate Medical Education Program. We're also investing in advanced technologies. We have more robotic applications than any other healthcare facility in Southern California. Innovation is central to our mission, and we are bringing that innovation to our communities, not just to our campus. Eisenhower has done an economic impact report, which found we are the single largest provider of employees and payroll over any other industry in the Coachella Valley. And just like the rest of the community, Eisenhower is growing. We're in the midst of a $279 million capital campaign to support these 10 key projects across our system. I'm pleased to report we raised $240 million to date from individuals in the community, and we are so deeply grateful for their support. Just $39 million to go. One of those projects is particularly close to my heart and located right across the street from our campus on Country Club Drive. It is the new Eisenhower Child Care Center, a 17,000-square-foot facility designed for the children of our doctors, nurses, and support staff. This center is built on equity. It will serve families across all roles, all income levels, with a sliding-scale tuition. Whether your child's parent is a surgeon or a housekeeper, they will receive the same care in the same classrooms, in a safe, enriching environment, and not have to pay the same tuition. Before I close, I want to extend an invitation to each of you to see and experience some of our most recent projects and advancements. Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Monica. Thank you for bringing that to us. How is your new clinic that you have in Indio doing with our community? And I understand you gave us the numbers, but how does that meet your expectations?
You know, it exceeded our expectations, even though we're saying 400 patients, and the capacity for one doctor is actually 700 patients. And that part because he needed to be licensed in the different insurances, so that's taken time. The next step now is that we're waiting for IHP to license us, and then we will be taking those patients as well.
Any questions? Mr. Gutron?
I just had a question. Your mission and your plan coming into Indio, I'm assuming you did everything to prepare. Is the volume what you expected? What challenges do you have right now at the clinic?
Yes, as a matter of fact, you may have heard that we have one designated group of individuals, Latinos in philanthropy, who are a group of individuals, business owners, and very active in our community. And they helped us to scope and understand the community in Indio and to better serve them. Hence, first, we had to, we waited until we found the right doctor who will service this community, Dr. Alfonso Vasquez. It has exceeded our expectations in gaining the trust and the patient numbers. One of our challenges, of course, and it's really out of our hands and the city's hands, has been the getting the insurances to support us quickly enough so that we can see more patients.
So all the staffing levels, nursing, the assistance and all that you were able to acquire, and there's still more to acquire, and there's still more talent out there for you to hire?
Yes. Like I mentioned, because of our Graduate Medical Education Program, one of our graduate residents will be coming into that office to help Dr. Vasquez. We also have programs through COD and Cal State San Bernardino in the nursing department, and we are gaining that, those nurses as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica. Anybody else have questions? Ortiz?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, your presentation and your investment in the City of Indio.
It's a pleasure to have you here in the City of Indio.
Yes. With that, we're going to move on to item number five point three, which is the proclamation for the retirement of Darla Burkett. She's the Executive Director for the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, and I see Mr. Scott Wolf is going to be handling this. Scott, would you like to come down to the middle here? And we all have, have our, our work that we've done and supported the rescue mission. Do you all like to come down and say a few words out so that we can do this? I know Wayman happens to be on the board, so really nice. Scott, come on over here. Get, come in.
All right.
And Scott has been with, how long you been with the rescue mission now?
I've been with the rescue mission fifteen years now, Glenn.
Fifteen years, and the right-hand man for the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission. You're there every time we need something for the city, so we want to thank you besides.
I'm, I'm just here to serve.
I think we're all here to serve, but thank you, and thank you for being here for Darla. For those of you that don't know, Darla Burkett is, is moving on. She's retiring. She's been here many years. She has brought the rescue mission to the next level, from the new building to the outreach, to everything that she has done, that she's touched with the help of great individuals like yourself and your staff. She has brought many people who had issues, personal, substance abuse, physical, mental, and brought them back to be productive citizens. And if you've never been to any of their graduations, you are missing out on an opportunity to see people who have changed their lives for the better. And she has done amazing work, and she's retiring, and we wanted to thank her in the City of Indio here, and I think every one of us could say something about it, the Police Chief, Brian, everyone else, because she has worked and touched all of us in some way, and we've been a part of it. So Darla, we want her to make sure that she understands that we appreciate her, her support, her work for the City of Indio. She's made our city a better place to live, and we know that she's changed thousands of lives and turned them around along with that, to make sure that they've have a better life. And with your new opening of your sixty-bed Women's and Children's Center, it's just going to get even better. So, we want to recognize her. I'm going to give this, hand this over to the Mayor Pro Tem, and then over to Wayman Furman, and we're just going to say a few words, our personal, about what she meant to us, then we'll let you say a few words about what's going on, and say a few words of yawn.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. You know, when I, when I came here twenty years ago, and I first took a tour of the rescue mission, it was an eye-opening experience. Darla has transformed the lives of so many people. And attending those graduations and, and seeing what they mean, giving these people a new lease on life, hope and direction, and it's not just you go through the program and you're out on your own. There is just so many levels of care and, and follow-up to ensure the success of these individuals. It is so wonderful to have this facility. Like I said, she has transformed many, many lives and continues to with this Women's Center. So, thank you, Darla.
Let me go this way. I'm going to leave the best for last.
Yes, I just want to thank Darla and, and her supporting staff for all the amazing work they do. You know, you mentioned the graduations, and you go there, and you don't just see people from Indio, you see people from all over the Coachella Valley, and actually all over the United States that come here to get the help that they need. And many of those people will stay here and help others get through their challenges. So, it's really an amazing place where you're growing all these miracles that are happening here in our community, so we really appreciate that work. And, you know, some people don't realize that here in the City of Indio, we actually have twenty-five percent of the shelters, I believe, right, in the County of Riverside, are right here in the City of Indio. So, these folks at CB Rescue Mission and at Martha's are helping us carry a big load for the whole Riverside County, and they're doing it in an amazing way and very successfully. So, really appreciate the hard work and the attention to detail that you guys have out here for our community, so thank you.
Mr. Katron?
Well, my experience has been when it was a small little church that turned into a facility to help the needy in the CoverTruck neighborhood, which is still in the county. Then we jumped up, thank goodness to good people like Judge Marsh, that gave a big commitment financially, but even money coming in is not the end. You need good-hearted people, and obviously who are recognizing today in the team, that's the good-hearted people. But you're not just serving Indio to be a better place. Like Councilman Ortiz, you're serving the entire Coachella Valley comes to Indio. Even though we all know the impact is not just to Indio, it's all the other eight communities in the county. But we do it really well because of people like Charlotte and everybody else before her and coming in. We hold you in high regard, but it's, it's a group effort. But leaders of yourselves are making those differences every day, and we thank you.
Now, we're going to have Mr. Furman, who happens to be a Board Member, past Mayor, Council Member, and he jumped in. Wayman, thank you for your dedication to, to the causes that you do. You really put your heart into it, so I figured this would be great for you to say a few words. I know you're going to have a few extra things to say.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think this proclamation speaks for itself, but it's good to have Scott here. You know, I just want to share something about Darla. She's a very humble, grounded person, and she, she requested, you know, the board just to, let me walk out in the sunset. I don't need no parties, I don't need nothing. So, this is textbook Darla, but you know something? In absence, it creates a buzz, and so it gives us a reason to really talk about her. You know, and she's amazing, you know, since I've been a Council Member, I've called on Darla many times, whether I was driving by a park, or it was midnight, and Scott can attest to this because he's taken my calls too, and you could call her anytime of night, and she'll have an answer for you. And a lot of times, when we look at the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission as an operation, we just think that it's one location. It's, it's a huge operation. They have outreach teams. We talked about partners in medical field. We have thrift stores. There's a lot of stuff going on in that operation, and she's able to put her thumb on it and make it all work for our community. And it was spoken earlier that we don't only just serve the City of Indio, and in my report, I'll talk about some numbers of sheltered people that we have in the City of Indio. And our number is always higher than everyone else because we have a lot of great philanthropic spirit in our city, and Darla is part of that. And she will be missed, but she's not going to be far. We're still going to work with her. She's leaving a, a good team behind. She's set the rescue mission up for success, and Council Members spoke on that. It was just a little facility right across the street, and she worked with partners to get it towards that now, and we just had another ribbon cut in. So, she's leaving it better than what she got it, and she'll be dearly missed, and we really appreciate her work. We appreciate your work. I have many stories about the rescue mission, the graduations, but it's a great partner in our city because we know in our world we need it. So, thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, um, this is a, a little emotional for me because when I first came to the rescue mission, Darla was one of the first people that I met, and when she brought me on board to work for the rescue mission, it was a blessing. And I have seen what she has done for the organization. She, she was brought into the organization over twenty-two years ago, at the start of the rescue mission as an organization trying to realize a dream. And she was the driving force and the leader behind realizing that dream. And what that dream was, was to serve more and more people, and to bring more and more people relief, and to feed more people, and to shelter more people, and to transition more and more people into independent living, and, and to give them better lives. And with that said, over the course of a few years, which is absolutely amazing, she was instrumental in raising almost twelve million dollars and doing it over the course of just three years, to build a facility that now sits on over three and a half acres, and has been expanded three more times since 2011, to the point where we are now, where we have a full service outreach team which never existed. We have a family shelter for single moms with kids that are victims of domestic violence, human trafficking, abuse, all kinds of different things. We just more than doubled our service capacity because of Darla's dream. We have a eighty-bed emergency shelter, and we've got programs that have an eighty percent success rate. And we couldn't have done any of this without our fearless leader, and that's exactly what Darla was. And that's exactly what Darla is. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here with us today, but I just want to say, from the bottom of my heart personally, and as the way that Darla helped me with my journey at the rescue mission, but not only that, but just from all the hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of people that the rescue mission served under Darla's leadership, and all the staff at the rescue mission. From my bottom of my heart, I just want to thank the community, all of our supporters, all of the people who, even if it's dropping off a bag of groceries or a bag full of clothes, or the person that writes that check that's got a lot of zeros on it. Every single person means the exact same thing to myself and to Darla. You are loved, you are appreciated, and we are grateful for everything. And on behalf of Darla Burkett, I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're going to have the proclamation read. Mr. Furman?
Yes.
All right, the proclamation reads, whereas Darla Burkett began her service to the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission in 2004, taking on the role of developer, excuse me, Director of Operations, and bringing with her a heart of service and deep commitment to the mission of helping those in need. And whereas in 2006, Darla Burkett was appointed Executive Director of Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, assuming leadership with a vision, integrity, and a steadfast belief in the transformative power of compassion and community. And whereas in 2008, Darla led the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission into a new era through beginning new beginnings, a capital campaign, working tirelessly with Board Members, donors, and local residents to raise nearly twelve million in under four years to construct a new facility from the ground up. And whereas, thanks to Darla's unwavering leadership, the new Coachella Valley Rescue Mission facility opened its doors in November 2011, debt-free, and nearly tripled the organization's capacity to serve individuals and families experiencing homelessness and hardships. And whereas, under the direction of Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, made the lasting and meaningful improvements to both programs and facilities, ensuring that every person who seeks help at the mission is given the opportunity and support to rebuild their lives with dignity and hope. And whereas, Darla has overseen several transformational initiatives, including the construction of an eighty-bed emergency shelter in 2015, the creation of a mission catering to provide job training and income for clients, the addition of a centralized laundry facility, the expansion of the Women's and Children's Shelter, and more than doubling its capacity to serve single mothers and their children. Whereas, more than two decades of dedicated service to the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission and to the most vulnerable in our region, Darla Burkett is retiring, leaving behind a legacy of leadership, compassion, and profound community impact. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Council Member Wayman Furman, on behalf of Mayor Glenn Miller of the City of Indio, along with the Indio City Council, do hereby recognize and commend Darla Burkett for her extraordinary service and lasting contributions to the Coachella Valley. We extend our heartfelt congratulations on her retirement and express our deep gratitude for her years of visionary leadership and unwavering dedication, and witness whereof I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Indio to be expixed this twenty-first day of May 2025.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. With that, we're going to move on to item number five-four now, is the New Riverside County Clinician, Jasmine Rojas. And Chief Tolle, are you handling this for us, sir?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and, and Council, I would like to bring forward Jasmine Rojas, who is part of our Quality of Life Team. She's a partner in working with our unhoused community. She works with CDRM and also Martha's Village and many other partners throughout our community. Our longstanding Quality of Life Team has continually worked on this community, and we would like to welcome Jasmine Rojas to the team, so.
Want to let her say a few words, Chief?
Yes, most definitely. Jasmine, you have a few words to say to the Council and to the community?
Please.
Just excited, just excited to be here and to help support my community. The team that I'm a part of helps to address the unhoused community and to address the mental health component in the City of Indio, so I'm just very excited to help support that cause.
Welcome. Well, next, we'll move on to item five-point-five, which is the proclamation for National Public Works Week from May nineteenth to twenty-third of 2025. If I'd known that, I would have sat back, gone, stayed back down there for that.
That's what we were asking.
So, now we're, back down we go. Mayor Pro Tem?
All right, I'm ready.
And this is a time and opportunity for us to thank our Public Works Department and all that works with it. If you don't recognize all the work they do, they're one of the ones behind the scenes, but all the landscaping, all the road improvements, the bridges you see going in, everything that you see that makes the city click and be a better place, not only for the stuff you see above ground, but if you look downtown, below ground, which makes a big difference. And Tim Wosel, our fearless leader there, I've known Tim for thirty-some-plus years, and he is the leader of our Public Works Department, and his individual workers that work there tirelessly for us, go behind the scenes on a daily basis, work with all our contractors, work with all our, our businesses, work with all our residents to make their life a better quality place to live. And Tim, we'd like you to come up with your, your team, all of you. We'd love you to come up. Please do. And we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna read the proclamation first this time, and then we're gonna let the Council say a couple words, Mayor Pro Tem, and then we're going to let you say a few things. Thank all of you. And if you look at this, the work that they do is unbelievable. You're talking millions of dollars of investment, taxpayer dollars, individual dollars, grant dollars that they do for our city, and we would not be as good as if it was not for your guys' work. And so, please let it be known that this might be your week, but we recognize you year-round for the work you do. So, National Public Works Week is May 2025, whereas Public Works Professionals are responsible for infrastructure, facilities, and essential services that are vital to create sustainable and resilient communities, protecting public health, and enhancing the high quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Indio. And whereas, the City of Indio is committed to implementing smart growth strategies and developing infrastructure that is innovative, environmentally responsible, and supportive of continued economic success, ensuring improved quality of life for all who live, work, and visit our city. And whereas the city takes great pride in maintaining its infrastructure, facilities, and environmental assets to promote tourism, attract businesses, investments, and ensure Indio Indio continues to thrive as a progressive and dynamic city. And whereas, these public facilities and services would not be possible without the dedicated and expertise of public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees who work collaboratively to design, build, operate, and maintain our transportation networks, water and sewer systems, and public buildings and structures, cornerstones of the City of Indio's growth and prosperity. So thank all of you, and we have Ray Trejo here, our Indio Water Authority General Manager. And Mayor Protem, would you like to say a couple of words?
Thank you. This place wouldn't run without you. You make this city run in every form and fashion. I am out there a lot, and I see you, and you said it absolutely. It's not just what you see, which is monumental in and of itself, it's what you don't see and all the things that are undergrounding. It's all the grants that you write to our benefit, it's all the engineering. I'm not gonna repeat the proclamation, but thank you, thank you to your team very, very much for making this city rock, because you really, really do. Thank you.
Sure, I want to say thank you as well for keeping up with all the growth here in our city. A lot of people see all the businesses coming in, and they appreciate that, but they don't see the work going on in the background, right, to get ready for all those businesses and all that growth, and that's really been able to help us attract more businesses because people see that we have the right infrastructure in place, that we have the nice roads, that we have the new sidewalks in our neighborhoods, and I think everybody's really appreciating all that new infrastructure that we have, the nice roads and sidewalks, and it's just really giving us the strength to continue to grow for our residents and for our city. So just want to say that I really appreciate you, and I get thanked all the time for your work, so sorry, but I try to pass that on to you guys to let them know that we have a great staff behind the scenes that's working on all these projects, so thank you.
Yes, you know, Councilmember Ortiz said it best, you know, we're out there talking about our city, giving seminars, and meeting folks about the great work that's being done, but you are all the experts behind the scenes making this work, and it does start at the top. Tim is a phenomenal leader. Since day one, I just like to go and sit and talk with Tim because I learn so much, and it trickles down, and so you guys do excellent work. And if you didn't hear me just whisper right now, I called Ray a utility knife, because that's what our staff does at Indio. You may have a certain title, but when it comes time to getting stuff done, our staff rolls their sleeves up and they get it done. That's what we're doing here. We make do what we have, and these individuals that were standing right here in front of us do excellent work in our city, and the fruits of labor are there. So thank you all, you're very appreciated year-round, but this is your week, so you gotta.
I take a deep, deep look at it in a different way, because I've been there, working with you at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, long weekends, so I have a great appreciation because I had the privilege of working from the police department involved, fleet, engineering. The Water Authority never existed when I started, it was all under one, and it's blossomed. And Tim and everybody else, maintenance, you have to maintain the buildings. Every single one of you bring an integral part of a success forward, and I thank you for everything that you do. Francisco, we keep bugging you about our fleet, but without you, we can't keep the wheels moving, so anyways, thank you, all of you.
Mr. Mussel, your words, sir. And then Ray, we'd like to say a few words.
It's really a great honor to work in this city. I am so honored to do so, and I am so grateful to council for all of your support, to our city manager, but also to this team here that surrounds me every day and help me deliver everything that we are doing. For the benefit of the public, right now, we're in the process of delivering nearly $80 million worth of projects as we speak, between the sports park, between Avenue 44 Bridge, the civic center improvements, the shadow sidewalk, everything else that we have already delivered, Jackson Street, Avenue 50, all of these projects, and we're not stopping there. When I first started with the city in 2015, we were able to deliver Jefferson Street to you, and I promised I will continue in that mission and continue to deliver interchanges, and the next one is gonna be Mondro Street at nearly $174 million. And we're getting ready to break ground on it, hopefully in the very near future, in early 2026. But it's all because of all of these guys here, from Don, who handles all of our public works and CIP, to Juan, who handles development on all aspects, residential, commercial, and industrial, to Francisco, who handles over 600 pieces of equipment, 600 pieces of equipment, and to Jose, who handles all of our facilities, all of our landscaping, 52 lighting and landscaping districts, 50 general fund areas, all the buildings and all the parks all throughout the city. And then to the rest of the team here, from Sarah to Bianca, and to our own grown engineer here, he's going to school to become a civil engineer, we can't find him outside, so we're growing him. And with that, I'll pass it on to my partner in crime here.
Thank you, thank you. I guess there's not much more to add, other than it is the women and men that make up our departments that really deserve the credit. They are loyal, they really put their lives into the City of Indio. The second part of that is our residents. Our residents are really helpful in allowing us to make these improvements, and are tolerating the improvements, and that really says a lot about the community of Indio, so thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, let's get a picture. Our Youth Advisory Council, are you coming down? Come on. We have our president, we have our vice president. Where's El Presidente? I know that. Hold on to that, you're gonna have to do some speaking, tell us about, come on, yep, three over here, three over here, we gotta even this out. Our Youth Advisory Council is a group of our high school students from any high school that we have that reside in the City of Indio, and they help us with our master plan and do things that are important to our youth. And it started many years ago with Michael Wilson started this, and Jackie Bethel, and they started it to make sure that we were, as we were growing and our youth was being a part of the city, that they would have a say in what they do, and they've done amazing work so far. So we have our president, you're gonna tell us what's going on and what we can do to help you, and let us know what schools you're going to, I know some of you are leaving, it's exciting. I think we got a USC Trojan here somewhere, but we'll see. Let's go. The floor is yours.
Yeah, so the Indio Youth Advisory Council, we go around the city and we do a lot of community work, whether that's street cleanups or volunteering at, we recently did the Veterans Lunch, just supporting the community all around. We also, this group is whatever the members decide that we really want to do, so I know this year we did a lot of leadership stuff, we went to several conferences, just to build up our own personal skills, and we come to all of the city council meetings and keep updated on everything that's going on around the city, so. I'm Bianca Teríquez, and I'm a senior at Xavier College Prep, and in the fall, I'll be going to the University of San Diego.
Go down a rope line here, say a few words, y'all gotta say a few words.
So my name is Aiden. My name is Aiden Chavez, I go to Indio High School, and in the fall, I'll be attending the University of Southern California. And my favorite thing about Yak was being able just to be involved in the community, and also being able to be here at the city council meetings, council meetings, just so the council members know what we're up to and what we're planned to do in the future. And it was just nice being able to be around in the community and be able to give a helping hand to whatever the city needed or whatever other youth needed, so.
Hello, my name is Joseph Cornejo, and I'm Yak's publicist. I'm not a senior, but I'm a junior at Shadow Hills High School. My favorite thing about Yak was building connections with these people. It was my first year in the Advisory Council, and getting to know you guys and get close to you has been a great pleasure of mine, and getting to create bonds amongst everyone in the city has been really, really great experience for me.
Hi, I'm Isabella, I'm also not a senior. I'm a junior at Indio High, and I'm this year's Youth Advisory Council treasurer. I love Youth Advisory Council. Before this, I was never involved in the community, but having a chance to like know the council members and be involved in the city has been amazing, and I couldn't be happier.
Hi, my name is Savannah Vella, I'm a senior at Shadow Hills High School, it's my first year in Indio Yak, and it's been a really incredible experience to like really be critically engaged within the community and just like understand the works of it, it's been incredible, and I just love the team, I love the Yak members, they're really incredible. I couldn't ask for a better year, so.
Katie Cisneros, I'm a senior at Indio High School, and I'll be going to Cal State San Bernardino. My favorite memory of Yak was going to all the conferences that we had, especially the one in Anaheim, and we got to go to Disneyland, and then building bonds with everybody was really fun, so yeah.
Hi, my name is Yalitzi Magaña, I'm a sophomore at Shadow Hills, and this was, I think, being in Yak, this is my first year being in Yak, and I think this was a great opportunity for me to get some exposure to engaging with the city and the community and meeting all these people, and just being in a club is one of my first times, like, well, being in a council of sorts, and I think this was a great experience, and I look forward to doing it next year, hopefully.
And we'd like their fearless leader, Rosalva, come up. Come up. I saw you with the bags, you're not gonna let them walk around, you're a big part of this, so. Yes, before, let's, hold on to those, because we got a little bit more, and say a couple of words, what?
Good evening, Rosalva Campos, Yak advisor. When I started 17 years ago, we had, what was it, about like six, seven, six, seven advisors, and now it's just one, but it's youth-led, so I mean, they just show it, so it is youth-led, so I love it.
And we have some very special things, I don't know who came up with these, but they are very cool.
Just like a real graduation stoles, yes, for the seniors, yes, we're gonna add that.
Talk to those principals, because.
It has the Indio Youth Advisory Council on it, and it has the classic 2025, I anticipate this is for our seniors.
It's a very special, absolutely, you bet. Sure, the first one, Bianca Teríquez, four years in Yak, Business Administration at University of San Diego, and favorite Yak memory, FNL, a conference in Anaheim, and staying up late with all the girls, I like that, that's fantastic. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you for your service, definitely. So proud to have all of you and to sit next to you. Okay, that's fantastic. The next one is Yak Mayor Protem, Aiden Chavez, first year in Yak, human biology with an emphasis on pre-med at USC, go Trojans. Favorite Yak memory, being able to tour JW Marriott Desert Springs. Again, congratulations. This is more fun than anything, being able to celebrate all of you, yes, this is really wonderful. The next one, Yak Secretary Savannah Vella, first year in Yak, political science and communication at UC Davis. You all, by the way, are our future, so just saying. Favorite Yak memory, attending the FNL Active Youth Conference, congratulations. And one last one, Yak member Kaylee Cisneros, third year in Yak, with such dedication, sports and marketing at CSU San Bernardino. Favorite Yak memory, going to the Anaheim Conference and got to go to Disneyland, I love it, that's fantastic, come on down, yes.
One big picture here, this is our future. Thank you all for indulging us, it's just exciting for us to be able to recognize individuals who've made a big difference, not only in our community, but our youth, who will be making a bigger difference in our community later on, so we like to take the time to recognize individuals who've done great work for our community and will in the future, so thank you for all that. We'll move on to the next item, which is our city manager report and information, Mr. Montgomery?
Did we have a Yak presentation, or that was?
Oh, we do, as a matter of fact, Youth Advisory Council, excuse me.
Can you hear me? Hello and good evening, city council members, my name is Isabella, and as Yak's current treasurer, I will be giving a report tonight. Recently, our members have attended the Asada Fest, where we provided free rose arrangements for mothers who attended and volunteered at the merch booth, where we also sold barbecue raffle tickets. We also had our mental health hike last Saturday in the Indio Badlands, where we could enjoy the beautiful scenery and good company. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, would you like to stay or be excused? He'll stay, thank you. Is that okay, Mr. Montgomery, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, and as you and I discussed, I'd like to introduce Kim Hardy, who is your representative, one of your representatives on the Animal Services Commission, and also the founder and executive director of the Coachella Animal Network. She just has a brief presentation, so I'd like to cede my time to her, Mayor, if that's okay.
Okay, and if you have anything you really want to tell us, don't worry about it.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, Mayor Miller, Protem, Elaine Holmes, and city council and city staff. I would like to introduce Ty Peabody, we've been working with the Ad Hoc Committee and on Manny Perez's committee for, to try to change our shelter into a no-kill, and he's got the report on that.
Good morning, good afternoon, I should say, some of you I've known for a long time, having served in Indio Wells City Council. This is, I will do this as quickly as I possibly can, I don't want to take a lot more of your time. We formed the Ad Hoc Committee, Manny Perez did, in January. The purpose of that was to deal with the issues related to the animal shelters in Riverside County, of which there are four. And over the period of time, and I've given you a series of documents that you can look at at any time, one is the outline of what I will say today, the other is the resolution that was passed on Tuesday by the county, which basically, and I'll explain it, is that the county is declaring that they want to go to a no-kill shelter operation. There's more to that, and I'll explain that in one second. I've also given you the year-to-date operating budget for this county, also the update for the last week, and so you understand, there were no reporting systems going on to the public, and so what we've done, I've included for you, is there's a weekly report that you can get online through the county, which tells you exactly what's going on with the intake and outtake of animals at the shelter. There's also a weekly report that you can get ahold of also, and I put a copy of the resolution in so that you could see that. The history and the real The, the history and the real problem is there are too many dogs being brought in to the counties. Right now, there's over eleven hundred dogs, which means that basically you're putting three to four animals in a, in a cage at the same time. It's not a healthy situation. The problem that we deal with, we can do a lot of solutions. The biggest problem we have is the public. We need help from the public and that means basically the hoarding, the bringing back animals to the shelter, I mean, some, some horrible things that, that we need the public to help us with. And basically, when we looked at the problems over the five months, the two biggest things we needed to the county was a staffing issue, a serious staffing issue in all of the facilities. And the other issue is how do you get the animals out of the facilities to the public? And that's a problem. And right now, what we've done, and you'll see it here, I mean, the biggest problem, as I say, is understaffing, a lack of public relations, there really was no public marketing of the animals. And that, and that's critical, that we have to be able to tell the story through social media, not only in the valley, but all over the country to get these animals moved either through um, to other cities, other states, and we're in the process of doing that. Because we're limited on time, I, I will just focus on, on the progress report of this versus taking you through the whole thing. The first thing we did, we hired a new Director of Animal Services. That is a critical position, this woman has thirty years of experience and one of the biggest places she ran was New York City's Animal Services, which is an amazing situation. We then recommended that they hire, they don't like me to use the word, a marketing director, they like to call it a communications director, it's the same thing. And that person's job is critical, that person will have a marketing person at each facility to basically all day, every day, put out on social media stories about the animals that are in the shelters. And that's critical, it's the only way we're gonna get the animals out of these facilities. And the, the other things that we've done, and we've asked the supervisors and it appears we'll get it for thirty-nine more employees, that mainly are gonna be focused into the four facilities, not into the corporate level, but at the, at the actual facilities. That's huge, and, and that whole function of those thirty-four people is to get animals out and get them rescued. And the other, the other part of that is we've asked them for four point six million dollars increase in their budget, which is a huge commitment, and we, we believe we'll get that, but that has to be finished over the next, I believe, three weeks. The, 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 one of the big things that people have criticized, and you've seen it all in the, in the news and on the radio, is they hired a consulting firm, and I want to make it clear, the county hired the consultants, Animal Services did not. And the contract is a basically a three-year contract with a thirty-day cancellation, and there's been a lot of misstatements about this. That consulting contract is made up of ten individuals who are experts in the field of animal services and they, if you looked at that, and it's basically broken down to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so it's basically seventy thousand dollars a person. And, and my guess is that probably within the next maximum of six months, that contract will end, so that there will be savings, but people are saying, oh, well, we can take that money and apply it to spade neuter and everything else, that's not the case. The money is, is, belongs to the Riverside County, it's their contract, and I think it's critical that everybody understand this because that's where the, the big issues are and people are complaining that, oh, they hired consultants. I will tell you, I've been a consultant, I've seen this kind of thing, what they have accomplished and what they're doing is monumentous. The problem was big, the problem's getting smaller. The other things that we've done during this period of time is we've changed the hours of operation, and the reason for that is it's found that most animals adopted from five o'clock to eight o'clock at night, yet before the facilities were not open during that time. Those hours have been changed. We changed the procedure on euthanasia, which before, they weren't necessarily always using it, what they call a commie drug. That means that the animal has a more peaceful way of passing away, unfortunately. The, the other things we've done, Kim, for instance, and she, you are very lucky to have this lady in your town, I gotta tell you, I've worked with her for five months, she's, she's tough, she's, it's like having a second wife. And, 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 and my wife is here, so I'll say that in, in public, but it's, it, it, she, she's tough and she's insistent on doing things the right way. So she threw a function for veterinaries at the Ruth Chris in Palm Desert for thirty-four vets. I won't go into all the details of that, but her objective was to get vets, because veterinary services are extremely expensive and most people can't afford to spend twelve hundred dollars to put their animal to sleep or other things like that. Well, she has been working with these vets to get these vets to do basically a neighborly thing, and that is to do it for less price, less cost, and, and, and that's critical and she's been successful in doing that. We are working also, just so you know, with Desert Ark and that contract is in, in finalization right now, and that purpose of that is to have the people at Desert Ark work at the facility in Thousand Palms to give the animals more attention and more treatment, because we found out today in a discussion that you put an animal in these facilities for two weeks, after two weeks, it changes their whole behavior and it becomes a major issue. And you take an animal that's totally normal, you put them in that environment for that period of time, he can become vicious, he can become psychologically totally screwed up, and that's, that's important. The, the other part of this is we're, we're, we're having them develop an all-encompassing marketing plan, they, they hired a new Director of that, as I say, from Dallas, she's totally trained, she ran the marketing for the entire Dallas community. Finally, on the no-kill. What no-kill means, people think, well, that's the end, we don't have a problem anymore. It doesn't work that way. You'll always have, and Palm Springs Animal Shelter has the same problem, you're always gonna have animals that are sick, you're always gonna have animals that have a temperament problem. That's unavoidable, we can't do anything about that. What it means under no-kill is that ninety percent of the animals that are adoptable, we get out, we get them adopted. And, but I'm, I'll be very honest with you, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow, it's gonna happen maybe a year from now, because until we get the public to help us in this endeavor, it's a problem. But we're going in the right direction, we need the help of the cities, I'm very impressed with what I heard today in your city, you guys should be very congratulated with what you've done in the city. And we need your help, we need you to help Kim get animals spayed and neutered, get shots, get ribby shots, get chipped, and, and, and also help in adopting animals. With that, I thank you very much for your time, you've, you've got the package, so you can go through the whole package, and if you have any questions, that's fine.
Any questions to Mr. Peabody or Kim?
I, I just, I don't have questions, maybe it's a comment, but I just thank you for your work, thank you for coming and sharing this with us and clarifying a lot of things, there's a lot of things out there being said, but when we get the, the facts and we get to have some time to read up on it, um, it, it's, it's actually great, you know, we're all animal lovers and we want to see this happen, I want to see um, our, our county become a no-kill zone as well. I, I spoke to the supervisor about some, some possibilities that we could do and I, and I, I know there's some efforts going on, but maybe a partnership with the College of the Desert to start some programs, especially veterinary or some of the services that are going on, that's one that I, I just wanted to put out there. I don't, I know there's a lot of efforts going on and I'm just saying it, but another one, I spoke to the county supervisor is um, working with the sheriff and our Riverside County inmates, we have long-term inmates that um, some are not having vocational training or any skills inside and it might be an opportunity to work with them and get them trained, to train some of the animals to become service animals or, or companion animals, we have a large population of uh, you know, people who could, who could use that. And um, like you mentioned, you know, there's issues with animals that we don't know of that we may not be able to keep them, but there are some animals that I, I think could be trained and then also go, you know, work with the Sheriff's Department with their budget and also uh, the general budget to combine and say, look, what can we do? Can we build a kennel at one of our county jails and train, bring a trainer or consultant to train ten, fifteen inmates to take care of these dogs in this side and this side? So just throwing it out there, um, and I, I think that would serve a good purpose. I work for the California Department of Corrections, we have a program like that, I told the supervisor I would get him some information on that as well, because uh, any and all ideas, I, I think are great to support what you're doing, so I commend you on your work as well.
Thank you very much. I will tell you, I will tell you, the veterinary is a very big problem, there's a huge lack of vets in this country, a typical vet today makes between two fifty and three hundred thousand dollars. We just hired a head vet and we had to hire the second vet and the county's given us permission to hire two more, that will give us six in the county, which is huge, and that will also help and assist in what Kim's trying to do in this market.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Again, thank you very, very much, we've come so far, and, and I really want to give a shout-out to Kim, um, because of her efforts, so many of the animals in our community and in our city have been spayed and neutered, I mean, it, it, and she is relentless, so thank you. And, and I want to be able to say, what else do we need to do? How can we continue to help you and support you, Kim? Um, and, and further some other ideas, you know, maybe in the animal adoption, uh, you know, maybe at the farmer's market when it's not too hot, you know, maybe there's other, other events that the city holds that can um, you know, help with the whole adoption. I mean, you put them in the city manager's office and I think that would just really bring a lot of people into, to help adopt them.
Hey, he's looking excited about this.
Add that to the job description, but no, seriously, thank you, help us, um, help us, help you, um, do more, and, and let's look at other opportunities out there to get, get some of them adopted.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor, uh, Mr. Guitron?
Well, first of all, Kim, you gave me an earful when I came on and I told you I would listen and I conveyed my words to the fellow council members. Everybody has an open mind, I remember when we had to close down our services, there was needs to do that because we didn't have the money to keep it up, but it doesn't mean we can't think outside the box. I think that uh, number one priority is we have to really sit down, have a really serious discussion, uh, because our city is large and there's a lot of need. Uh, my hat's off to Councilmember Wayman Furman, because there are programs where they're doing that and Mayor Cooper Arizona was renowned in doing their program to have them work with the shelters and offset their costs by, by their, those that obviously qualify to do those things and have those opportunities. We ourselves at the City Police Department, our graffiti program, because I started it, was not because it was me, uh, we have those that do community service and they help us in our graffiti program. We've been down graffiti technician for over, almost a year, uh, because they got a better job within the department, but we have one guy that works his tail off and if it wasn't for that program, we have access to, at times, anywhere up to four or five people. Uh, it's an easy program and there is rules to follow and they, those that qualify for the community service at least help out, so those are good opportunities, but I think we, your good efforts and what you're presenting here, we have to sit down and have that serious talk. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Sir T, anything?
Wanted to say thank you for bringing us that presentation and that information as well, so that we're up to date on what's going on at the county, and again, we appreciate all the work that you're doing, Kim, all the work that you've been doing for years and years to help us with controlling the animal population here, and I'm sure that our city can help in what, what networks we have, sharing that information, when you have those programs, we try sharing them on our pages as well, but just go ahead and tag us and we'll, we'll get those going and whatever else help we can get. Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, with that being said, thank you all, the city of Indio has supported Coachella Animal Network and I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the city. You're the only city that reimburses half the cost of their residents and that's something that you should be proud of. But on that note, I'm having a huge clinic in Fantasy Springs, eleven and twelve, June eleven and twelve, we're having three mobile units there. The mobile unit from San Diego, Humane Society is gonna be there, Animal Action League and the county, so we should be able to do a little over a hundred animals a day, which is huge, but, so come out and look, check it out, I think you'll like it. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. And Kim, if we could, what is, what is the biggest need? I mean, obviously, funding and that, but when you talk about people adopting an animal, what is it that restricts them from actually wanting to do it? Is it the cost?
The cost of veterinarian care in the future, because when they do adopt an animal, legally, they have to have it spayed, neutered, microchipped and vaccinated. Uh, my clinics, and education, if they knew about my clinics, you could walk into my clinic and get a rabies shot for thirteen dollars. But if you go through a veterinarian, it's a hundred and something, because they, they include the um, the office visit. So a lot of it is, is education, but the main problem is the veterinarians. You know, uh, it costs, a long story short, it costs three hundred and fifty dollars to neuter a horse, it costs seven hundred to neuter a cat. So what's wrong with that picture? Yeah.
Well, thank you, you know, being on the Animal Commission, uh, getting up to speed on this, thank you for both of you. Thank you both for giving us that opportunities, but please, let us know where we can do things, work with Jonathan, work with any of us, to let us, to let us know how we can come up with creative ideas for Indio that maybe that will help the rest of the valley at the same time. If we can come up with ways that Indio can make a difference, we start there and we work our way out, so.
I have lots of ideas, so I'll share them with you.
I, I would even go to say, if, if we had a mobile unit that could, you know, I know you're working with some agencies, but if we, we have some communities where they're just not educated on animal care, you know, we grew up in some communities where you just got a dog and you had a dog, and you know, when there's changes in laws and things happening, some of these communities have to be educated, so when we're, when we're out there walking and talking, you know, we could use your material or whatever we gotta do to educate some of these neighborhoods, because, I mean, you could go in one of our neighborhoods and at midnight, you got a pack of dogs roaming the neighborhood and so, or they're, they don't have enough water, they don't have shade or they're, they're being left in vehicles, and so um, one of the things that, you know, I pride myself on working with our police department is, is traffic safety, you know, and I think this is another opportunity to add to that campaign, to say, along with traffic safety, let's talk about your dog and your pet and your neighbor's pet and your friend's pet, because these kids are the ones who are gonna spread it on, you know, with, with adults, you know, on top of the ten thousand things that adults have going on, these kids love animals and if they could be educated on it and then create a pipeline for them to become veg- uh, veg- I said vegetarian, other than vegetarians, but veterinarians, I think this is a great opportunity for us to, to keep the effort going on in Indio, so thank you for what you do, I, I love it.
And Kim, if you can come up, like I said, with creative ways, because it's gonna keep the rise, the cost is gonna continue to rise, anytime you do anything with the county, the cost rises, so if we can look at helping use, spade neuter, chip, you know, vaccines, whatever, or maybe Indio pays for it not to stop, as people adopt pets, you know, or we're gonna pay for it one way or the other, maybe we pay for some, come up with creative ways to do it and maybe some grants we can get from other people out here, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's very possible, I, I see a light at the end of the tunnel, no one else does, but I do, and I think it's very possible, but the main thing is education and veterinarian care.
I think that one thing with this, a talk with the council and the city manager with Jonathan and you is collaboration is the biggest thing right now, and I think our neighbors or the city of Quinton Coachella find out what we can do to team up to take care of our end, and I think we probably need to do that and ask the county with our animal control officers that we have assigned to the city, they're here, there's three of them, and they can be part of, with our social media, doing some social media things like you mentioned.
They actually call me now, and so instead of citing an, an owner, they want to get them in compliance, so I try to give them on the next bus and try to give them on the compliance, but each bus, I can only do thirty animals at the max. Okay, feral cats, we can do forty. But that's it, I mean, you know, and every city now wants a bus, you can't staff them, we can have five buses, but you can only have one running at a time.
Well, we appreciate it, coming with creative ideas, work with Jonathan and our staff and we'll see what we can do to, to help ease this burden somehow, it's, it's a very difficult subject, and a very expensive one.
Thanks, Brian, okay, thank you.
Mr. Montgomery, no, you gotta have some other stuff, please.
That was, that was all good stuff.
This, this has, uh, with as much that's gone on for the last, we had our, our concert or Asada Festival, we had our, you know, ninety-fifth birthday, this is, has nothing to do with what you had to come up, so please, take the time.
Well, I'm sure you will cover all of those matters, we, I'd just like to echo something that was mentioned during the Public Works Week presentation, we have a community that is very, very patient with all that's going on out there. Uh, today, for example, we had to close down portions of Oasis and to traffic and, and I'm just very appreciative as, as the city manager, as I'm sure you are as well, for our residents being so patient for what's going on out there and the orange cones and the barricades, it means progress, but it means patience as well, so just with that, Mayor.
Good, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for all you do. We'll move on to item number eight now, which is City Council Conflict of Interest Disclosure, does anyone have any conflicts they need to discuss? Okay, with that, we'll move on to item- Okay, with that, we'll move on to item, Mr. Gutron, did you need something?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to item number nine now, which is the city council report on meeting attended for government code section five, three, two, three, two point three D. Mr. Gutron?
Well, number one is the Asada Festival. Got nothing but positive comments. Uh, the only thing is that when they mentioned, can we do it a little later, like four or five o'clock? Said we can predict the weather, but I'm sure that we're thinking about it. But I didn't hear any, anything negative, nothing significant. Other than the sit, can we do a salsa competition instead of avocado? Because the avocado went bad quick, but, because of the heat. But it was great. So, a lot of great comments. I'm sure the rest of the council received the same. I attended the CV Mountains Conservancy. It was a really good informative for me. Um, I realized a lot of how it links literally into everything we do in the valley and their mission. So a lot of really good topics, uh, with the CV link was a, was a topic because of some of the things that are going on in the wilderness area that the, the Conservancy has. And, uh, some good discussions were done there. So I look forward to how it benefits Indio and how it benefits our neighbors. So that was really good. And one thing, thank you to Councilmember Ortiz, the plant native. When I mentioned it in front of that whole body, you said Indio was the first one to pick boxes and boxes and boxes of them to educate the public on how to better plant and use native plants, which, uh, Council Miller's also been mentioning because his background is landscaping and design, was that there's, this is a really good informative book. And now it's being, uh, going to be published. So for the Water Authority, thank you because they said you were the ones that picked them up. And so that was great for the outreach and, uh, it's a good book and people should take the time to read it because it might help them. The other one was that for the first time in a while since the mid nineties, our Indio Police Department, the Public Safety, members of the Indio Police Officers Association, Councilmember Oscar Ortiz, Councilmember Wayman Furman, Glenn Miller towards the end and myself. And I know that Wayne had another commitment, so we all understand, but it was nice to really see everybody there. It was nice to see our public safety gathering. And the fire department joined, joined in and took a bunch of hot dogs and hamburgers, but that's fine. They enjoyed themselves as well. So it was really good. Um, but it was nice to see the gathering of our family and our department that works twenty-four seven. Not that it's any better than anybody else, but it's really nice and my hat's off to that. And, and I think Wayman actually contributed some donations to the prizes, which was great.
Actually got a community partner to donate, uh, statewide, uh, construction. They asked me, how could they help? And I said, well, if I were one of the officers, I would like a handgun.
Yeah. So everybody, it was just great. It was really nice to see the families to finally take a little bit back of the past and moving forward. Anyways, um, the MyIndio app. Thank you, staff. Thank, Ian's in here, anywhere. Um, and the IT department and the direction, I'm, I really appreciate Ian and I know it, the direction of the city manager. Um, I've been promoting it. It has Public Works now. It'll have a little bit of the Water Authority. Sorry, Trey Hope, but it's there. We got to keep the water flowing. It's easy to use and I know that I heard some comments, I go, man, there are just more people. If it's coming from a member of the public, take it. If you, when the only way we can do it is it has to be submitted. And it's great. You take a picture, a GPS is a thing. Uh, I just did a community meeting of, I'm growing the neighborhood, uh, at Forty-Eighth. And they reported something and I got an email saying, thank you so much. Public Works was there picking it up. So, I really just thank you. It helps, like, the city of Los Angeles uses it, some of the big cities use it. We need to use it more. And at the end of the day, it just helps everybody communicate. So thank you. And it gives updates. It gives updates as things are being handled. And thanks to the staff especially, uh, for the celebration of our ninety-fifth year anniversary. I am, I'm sure the council does too, but to me, being homegrown and realizing how far we're going and the, the great things that the city's doing and the council and the leadership and everything else. It doesn't, it doesn't really take effect until you see how proud everybody is. So, thank you for taking the time. And, uh, it's all about Indio for me as well as the council. But I just, five years, it's going to be a hundred folks. A hundred years, the oldest, largest, second seat of the county, every big ticket I have you can think of. And we are world renowned because of a lot of things that we're doing besides the festivals. So, be proud. Thank you for that. And, uh, internships. I see the, uh, the Youth Advisory Council. Members of my family benefit from being in the Youth Advisory Council and now have established careers because of it. Because they started that. Thank you to Jackie Bethel, as you mentioned, Michael, but Jackie Bethel, the reason I had to put that in because we need to remember where things came from. We went to a Desert Sands Unified School District Board and I saw students sitting at the dais. And Jackie asked me to go with her because she was going to do a presentation on behalf of the city as a councilwoman. I believe she was mayor. And she goes, look at that. I go, you can start that. And she did. Uh, she had the support of her council, just like we do today. But what they did is we also had internships. These students would come in from the summer, as soon as they got out of high school, those that can get a work permit. And they were in every department in our city. And a lot of them were inspired in careers that you're doing today. Planners came out of it, um, engineers came out of it and other parts of the department because they've made that time. And in the IT department, it was a couple that went in there and some of them are currently in IT because of it. And that was through Mike Young, which is Ian's predecessor, who was the first manager literally that we had for the city for IT. So we're losing a valuable tool with these kids and keeping and growing our own by giving it an opportunity for three months. And that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gutron. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. These past couple of weeks, uh, first, a few days ago, we, we joined the Indio Sunrise Rotary. Indio Water Authority came with us. Um, Councilmember Holmes and, uh, Mayor Miller was, were there as well. I want to thank them for all their work, especially for their efforts in fundraising for our youth programs and for our local veteran needs. Also attended the Indio Police Department Family BBQ. They had a lot of games for the kids. It was great seeing all those families out there. I want to say thank you to the Chief's Office and Indio Police Officers Association for holding that for our police staff and their families. Uh, me and the chief were in the dunk tank, so the staff had some fun with that as well. And then, uh, I went to Indio Middle School's Advisory Council. It was our first meeting. Me and Councilmember Furman attended. We heard some of the data coming out from the staff, uh, that they're gathering from students and teachers. We also heard from, some of the concerns from the teachers and were able to share our feedback as well. Desert Sands held their state of the district. We heard some of the updates from the district about this last school year and some of the new innovations happening with technology and artificial intelligence going on in the schools. I also attended the Kana Sada Festival. That was amazing. We had, I believe, over seven thousand people there. Uh, really fun time. Everybody really enjoyed it. So we want to thank our staff for making another successful event here in downtown Indio. We really appreciate it. And I know our businesses appreciate having that additional traffic down there as well. I also took a trip to Las Vegas to the Climate Change Preparedness Conference. We heard from people all over the United States about, uh, different issues that people are seeing with increased severity of storms and also the, the solutions that are coming up from those issues around the country. Cal Fire was there. Um, they were talking about updating their defensible space to three zones to get more detailed in their fire prevention methods. They also talked about a community brigade pilot program, which they had, uh, forty people who graduated a couple of months ago in fire prevention and mitigation. And during the LA wildfires, they committed five thousand hours into evacuations and mitigation to help out their community. So, really glad that they were there and able to help. They also mentioned a free mitigation home assessment that's happening in fire prone areas. And they're seeing up to fifty percent, uh, reduction in risk in those homes. So it's just free help that, um, the fire department's coming in, letting people know how they can make easy changes to help, um, protect their home, their homes. Uh, they also talked about the lack of funding for the National Oceanic and its Atmospheric Administration. That's going to make fires and other disasters less predictable in the near future. So we need to watch out for that. Uh, Utah talked about their, um, droughts that have been happening. So they've actually gone from recycled water all the way to tap, which is very, uh, rare in our communities, but they're seeing, because of that severity, they are making those moves. They also mentioned that the droughts and floods are increasing, uh, maintenance costs. When there's droughts, uh, their containers will get a bit too empty and they, they have more bacterial growth. During floods, they're having contamination coming in, uh, because of all the extra water that's coming in and all the runoff coming into their system. So they're seeing those, uh, increase in cost. Clark County is also actually talking about native trees. They're going into, um, low income neighborhoods and offering two trees per home to increase the tree canopy in those neighborhoods and lower the temperatures during extreme heat times. Uh, we also heard from a new program called Cal Heat Score. It's not available yet, uh, but they're working on it. And this is going to be a new alert system, similar to the air quality alerts that we have now. And those alert systems are going to include, um, temperatures, humidity and also average temperatures of the region so that people can know, uh, when to limit their labor or their recreation in the outdoors when there's extreme heat conditions. Uh, Cincinnati and Indianapolis, uh, are both seeing significant increases in severe storms, which are causing issues with flooding and other infrastructure damages. And, uh, there's a lot more there, but that's all I'll share for now. But it was great, uh, learning from all these other people and, and seeing what's going on in the country and seeing what we, we may be able to use here as well as, as we face our changes here with climate change. I also attended the inland regional energy network meeting. We approved the, um, agency budget for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. And we also, uh, talked about the CPUC application process for funding for years twenty twenty-eight and twenty thirty-five. These are energy efficiency funds that come from our, uh, utility, uh, expenses and are there to help our, our communities, um, start building more energy efficiency into their buildings and save us money in the long run. I also attended the Cal Cities meeting with Imperial County and Riverside County. So we got to see some of our, of our friends from Imperial. And that was great to catch up with some of them. And also, uh, wanted lastly to congratulate the Indio High School FFA, the Future Farmers of America and Environmental Club. Um, today is actually, right now, they're having their ceremony, uh, for the end of the year. They helped compost over ninety-two thousand pounds of organic material here in our community. And I believe it's their first year. So they're off to a great start and this is going to help us reduce our carbon emissions, but also teach our communities a bit more about, um, improving our carbon cycle, growing, uh, healthy food here locally and just improving, um, the food cycle here for our community. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Furman?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Let me see, let me see if I can match that. All right, uh, good evening. Uh, one of the meetings I attended was Riverside County Transportation Commission. And, uh, the most notable, notable item on there was, uh, our budget that we're going over right now. And, um, I'm still happy to say, you know, the Coachella Valley, Indio, uh, particular is still getting our fair share. Um, and we're still focusing on, uh, regional material projects, our capital improvement projects that go through C-VAG. Um, our transit operations through, uh, Sunline Agency and also our CV Rail project that we're still working on. So, um, that budget is due to come back to us for, for RCTC. I also attended a, uh, C-VAG homelessness committee, a meeting this morning. And, uh, one of the items we talked about, uh, was a point in time count. And that was conducted in January and both sheltered and unsheltered individuals for the first time in two years. Um, it was coordinated by Riverside County, uh, Continuum of Care in collaboration with local cities and agencies and the account, helped fill HUD requirements. So citywide, there's approximately three thousand nine hundred ninety individuals experiencing homelessnessness. And nineteen percent decrease in unsheltered homelessnessness and eleven in, eleven percent increase in, uh, sheltered. And so, uh, that decrease is, uh, significant in unsheltered population. But, um, you know, that's a big collaborative effort with our, our, uh, local, uh, partners. So, um, also, um, the city of Indio, our point in time count, we had fifty-one unsheltered individuals during the count and, um, sheltered four hundred and fifty-eight, which is the highest. And I mentioned that earlier, four hundred and fifty-eight, and that's counting our, our shelters. And so that's, that's huge because that just shows that the commitment that the city of Indio has with our partners to house individuals. And, uh, mind you, these numbers could change in, in any second. Point in time count, they start in the morning. Um, they count in grids, but, uh, folks move locations, folks shift, um, different cities. And so, um, this is just the, that time that they had to count. But we all know those numbers could change at any second, how, uh, individuals can move around, uh, from city to the city or, uh, different counties as well. Moving on, I attended the Desert Sands Unified School District, State of the District as well. Um, it was a great event and, uh, we have to see some of the incredible efforts taking place across the district. Uh, doc, uh, thank you to Dr. Kay Warmer and her staff for always putting our students first and looking forward for a bright future for Desert Sands Unified School District. Another great event, uh. Uh, so thank you to Desert Sands. Um, I also attended the Asada Festival downtown. It was great seeing everyone out at the Center States for the Asada Festival. And, uh, I'm hearing there was over, uh, five to six thousand individuals there that attended. So that was great. And it's just a testament to, uh, the hard work of our city and our community. So thank you to our local businesses, especially like the Tap House, Gabino's, uh, for working with us as well. Uh, when we host these events, they have, have their own events as well. So, um, and also, um, it was just a great event, great food. Um, and we're looking forward to next year as well already. And so, um, like mentioned earlier, I did attend the Indio Middle School, uh, advisory meeting. Uh, thank you to Principal Kulanan and, uh, Vice Principal James Atkins and the school counselors for the leadership. And, uh, taking a David, data-driven approach and forward thinking to improving our student outcomes at school and out at home. And I look forward to continue working with this advisory group as well. Um, I also attended a, um, a town hall that was, uh, headed and spearheaded by, uh, Chief Toley in Indio, uh, Police Department and in the Miles and Clinton community. Thank you to Chief Toley and his staff for organizing this town hall. Um, also, um, our code enforcement team was present and most importantly, the community showed up. And we discussed some proactive Edwards, uh, efforts, um, in making our community safe. Um, there were some great discussions about traffic speeding, a recent incident that took place that's still under investigation there. The community got an update. Um, and I, I want to say another special thank you to Lieutenant Laba uh, for, uh, building a lot of traffic questions and collaborating with the coun-, uh, the council on the Drive Safe Initiative. Uh, that's going great. And, um, so, um, thank you to Indio PD for hosting that. And we're looking forward to, uh, some more coming up this week. Uh, Chief Wright, Thursday, Thursday at five o'clock, uh, where, this one's at First AME. First AME Church, um, in Old North Indio, um, there will be another one. And, um, you know, I, like I said, hats off to Chief Toley for doing this. We want to engage with the community more. Um, sometimes folks don't like to come to council meetings or they, they don't want to go to a chief advisory meeting. So, um, Chief Toley has the, the, the best spirit. Let's meet them where they're comfortable. So we're going to their communities and talking to them. So that's, that's great. So we appreciate that. Um, I also attended, um, the International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia and Transphobia. Um, at College of the Desert here at the Indio Campus, um, uh, Councilmember Ortiz was present, uh, Council, uh, Mayor Pro Temp, Holmes was present. Um, most, much of the, the event was in Spanish, but we were able to engage with the panelists and organizers. Um, and, and we appreciated their message of inclusion and awareness. And we look forward to continue to support our LGBTQ, uh, uh, youth and our young adults and ensuring they feel welcome and safe and represented in our community as well. And, um, I also attended the Police Officers Association BBQ. Uh, thank you to, uh, Officer Acustic, uh, who's the president in the Indio High School, uh, Indio High School. I'm trying, I'm trying to speed up here. Indio Police Officers Association for organizing a great event. It was nice seeing the officers and staff outside of their uniform, enjoying time with their families and, and coworkers. Um, events like this are important for morale, camaraderie and community connection. So we're looking forward to next year and how we can continue to support, um, our police department and our police union. And like I said, I want to mention statewide construction for, uh, giving a great donation. But next year, we're going to be out there looking for some more partners to donate because it's, it's just a good event. And I, like I said, it does, uh, help with morale and camaraderie. Um, I also attended the Riverside County Imperial Valley Joint Division Meeting for Lead California Cities. Um, along with the, uh, Mayor, uh, City Manager, Mayor Pro Temp. Actually, our whole council was there. Yeah, I don't have to, the whole team was there. So we represented for the city of Indio. Um, this is joint meeting, like I mentioned, and thank you to Fantasy Springs, uh, for hosting us. Fantasy Springs is always a gracious host. And, um, it was good to, um, and insightful to hear what other communities are doing. Um, because it enhances our quality of life when we do, um, uh, work with other communities and see what ideals they have. And, and they're picking our brains to see what's going on in Indio, right? So, um, um, Councilmember Ortiz and I were the last ones to walk out because people still had questions about our city. So, we also receive a legislative update from Assemblymember Jeff Gonzalez. And we just look forward to serving on, uh, legal city community, uh, committees in the future. And, uh, we also, um, attended the ribbon cutting for Raising Canes, if you guys haven't heard about that place. Um, it was a great grand opening and a ribbon cutting with Raising Canes. It's one of the most popular restaurants in our country and it's, uh, open, uh, north of the freeway. They're already, already giving back to our community. They gave one thousand dollars to Indio High School. And they also gave, uh, a thousand dollars to the Boys and Girls Club of Coachella Valley. So congratulations to them. We look forward to the new In-N-Out as well that just opened today, I believe. And so they're right, right next door from each other. So, um, that just goes to show you that the city of Indio is, uh, we're open for business, right? So, you guys are out there, we're open for business. But, uh, last but not, last but not least, I just want to say, um, that our house, our hearts go out to the city of Palm Springs during this difficult time. Um, as our neighbors and fellow, uh, members of the Coachella Valley community, uh, we stand in solidarity with you. Um, Palm Springs is a city of strength, pride, unity, and I have no doubt that they'll continue to rise to, um, to the same resilience that they always have. And I also want to say thank you to all the first responders that responded to this terrible incident. Uh, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Andy Mills, for your leadership, Riverside County Sheriff's, ATF, FBI and all their support staff. And on behalf of the city of Indio, we extend our love and compassion to those affected. That completes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Mayor Pro Tem?
My gosh, another hard act to follow. Gosh, we are so involved and engaged. Along with the mayor, I attended the opening of the Desert Wildlife Facility here in Indio. You know, that property used to be, has a little bit of history with Linda York and the York family and her dedication really to the birds and the wildlife in our community and beyond. And it was sad to see it closed down while these folks have really taken it to the next level, a lot of remodeling and whatnot. So it was really good to see the ribbon cutting. And it's going to expand well beyond wildlife. And it will be taking care of a lot of the other animals and critters in our community that from time to time, you know, have issues, are hit, poisoned sadly enough. They'll be able to take them there and they'll be able to treat them. So it's really great to have them in our community. Actually, I was at the picnic with the team here. And Officer Acustic can, I even won golf at Indio, the lights at Indio. So I have a foursome there. If anybody wants to go play with me, we can do that. But it was really nice to see where all the family, the kids, were just running around, having a good time, grilling the hot dogs and the hamburgers and the good natured, our good natured chief and the dunk tank. A good time was had by all and appreciate that it was put on, appreciate the service to our community. Thank you very much. Attended the Desert Sands State of the District. You know, they are really on the leading edge of making sure that our kids are well educated. They never stop looking toward the future to see how we can help them in their environment. So I always look forward to that because their desire to bring technology and to be on that leading edge is significant and certainly helpful to our kids. Cane's opening, boy, that was a blast. That was really a lot of fun. You know, a hundred and forty people plus were hired from our local community. So I think that's really terrific. Congratulations to everyone that got jobs. Asada Fest, I mean, we all loved that. That was seven thousand people in that little downtown. That was a dream and a vision that was really fantastic. But what I liked even more is how many people came to me and said, what's next? There, we want to just come and hang out. What event are you guys going to have next? What about next weekend? What about next month? What are you going to do next? And I absolutely loved hearing that. And I look forward to hearing about what we're going to do next because I'm sure we'll knock it out of the park as well. Very, very successful. Ninety-fifth birthday, that's a milestone. And that's really a milestone in our community. And to have that touch of history and the touch of progress as we move things forward, I think what makes progress special is that we all reach back and we have a firm handle on the history of our community and really want to embrace it and retain it. Something special I really wanted to share about one of our council members. So I had the pleasure of being at the Rotary Club meeting. We received an award. It was really nice seeing all the youth there as well in the Interact Club. But I found something really, really wonderful about Councilmember Ortiz. And that is that he was a graduate of the Rotary International Leadership Academy, which really starts with our youth and takes them through this academy with just a whole lot of detail on serving and giving back. So since a very early age, you have been serving your community and really is an honor to serve with you. And I thought that was just really something that we needed to highlight. So thank you and congratulations. That ends mine.
That's it? Thank you. Well, with all those highlights, thank all of you for continuing to go out and support our community. I mean, really a lot of opportunities and a lot of events you guys handled. I'll just hit some of the highlights. There's a lot of them that have been already mentioned. But I really do think the Riverside and Imperial County, the Cal Cities was very big. We have a great relationship with them. A lot of our individual families live in both counties. But also we're interchangeable in terms of a lot of things that we do together. And we just don't get that opportunity to see them. We have more in common, I think, with Imperial than we do a lot of the western side of Riverside County. So it's good to see that they came out here, talked to us about what's important to them. Power comes from IID down there, water's a big portion of it. Two of the big things that are going to make this valley work together. But also we had our new Assemblyman Jeff Gonzalez come down and talk to us about how he's crossing over the aisle to work with different legislators on both sides of the aisle, but also through both communities throughout California to bring change and hopefully resources back to our communities. So it's good to hear that there's opportunities there because it always seems like all the money always goes to LA, San Francisco, Sacramento. And you know, this valley has a lot of potential to be able to bring jobs and resources to it if we just had the funding to be able to do it. So it's great to see we have an advocate out there. The Asada Festival, I think we've all said great things about it. I think it's a great addition to the city of Indio. That downtown stage, taking center stage was exactly what we built it for, was to bring people in. Miguel, thank you for heading this. You and your team and your staff were running around from everything, from the art of chokes and making sure that everybody had the ingredients for the guacamole to making sure the stage people were on at the right time. And it ended up, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, seven thousand people, Mr. City Manager? Seventy-five hundred people were there. I mean, that's great to get anybody out in the community. And you know, they're not all from Indio. That means other people are coming from other areas. Guests from all over the world that are visiting that said, hey, what are we going to do? We're going to go to Indio. They got a festival there. And they were pleasantly surprised, not only with what was there going on, but the quality of the festival itself. So my hat's off to everyone there. City Manager, thank you and all our department heads in Rosalva for the Government Day. One of the highlights of doing all the things we do is be able to work with our youth. And we had five schools come down to our teen center led by Mr. Montgomery as the keynote speaker. I said a few words, but all our department heads were there to explain to the youth kind of how a city runs. And it was very, very enlightening to see these young adults to be looking at what the future could be about working in city government. So thank you to all of them. They were lunch and schools and being able to look at some of the different jobs that were there. So that's one of the great things about it. And then Mayor Pro Tem, you and I and the police chief were all at the John J. Benoit Behavioral Health Art Fair. We were judges on it. Over six hundred pieces of art from individuals, both youth and adults who have behavioral health issues and that, did an art show there and we judged it and were able to get some winners. So they were up for sale too, so some of them were bought. But a great thing for our past county supervisor and state senator and assemblyman, naming it after him to help support those in need. And then also our ribbon cuttings, the Desert Wildlife Center, Raising Cane's, even though they didn't have a ribbon cutting, In-N-Out Burgers Open. You're going to hear some more down here very shortly. That comes with hard work and from not only investments from our community, but our staff to make sure, you saw public works already, all they do. It takes everyone in the city to make sure this happens and opens up. So my hat's off to all of them. And then lastly, I did a presentation for the Sun City Shadow Hills Rainbow Club. Mr. Montgomery set it up for me. There was about seventy-five members there and talked to them about the city in a presentation. Really excited to hear what's going on in the city and want to be a part of it. So it was great to see and talk to them. And with that, I'll end my comments with thank you to everyone for your continued support of our city. We have ninety-five years that we're at. We've got many, many more years and our brighter future is coming in front of us. You're just going to see so much opening up. And that's all thanks to our residents, our staff and our businesses who continue to believe in us and support in us. So thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Furman?
I'm sorry. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this. Chief Toley's been busy, so I have to give him some more credit over there. I also attended the Coffee and Cops.
Yes.
Over at Sun City Shadow Hills. I have to say, Mayor, you have a very engaged group over there. A lot of people there. It wasn't a normal coffee and cops. It turned into a town hall, but we loved it because we got to talk about a lot of the efforts that we have going on in the city. And I was put on the spot. I had to answer some questions. So but another great event, Chief. And you know, those events are really good engagement with our community in respects to public safety. So I wanted to mention.
Absolutely. And I think that's what shows what's great about this council and our staff is that we continue to go out and we continue to go throughout the city, even though district. We really don't care what goes on because it's really getting information out to our community. Worth our public safety and everyone else. Chief, you and all the staff actually going, continuing to go out to do things for our community. And they enjoy seeing us. They really have that feeling that you care when not only the city council, but our staff, our police department goes to events and everything else. You know, we want them engaged. The better city we'll have is when all our residents are involved with what we got going on here. So thank you to all of you for that. And with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have items ten point one to ten point nine. Did somebody want to pull anything? Is there somebody would like to pull or do we want to make a motion?
A motion to approve?
In ten point nine, I think it's currently as a one-year.
So before that, does anybody else have, we have ten point nine we want to pull. So we're good with that. Go ahead, Mr. Ortiz.
Yeah, so I wanted to see for the ENA for ten point nine, if we could have an option to review at the six-month period and go from there.
So you're fine with the language on it, but you want a review on six months? It's a one-year agreement, but you want an update after six months to be able to come to staff or come to us? Or how would you like to do?
I think we'll leave it up to staff.
I think it should come to council. I think that should come to council, yeah.
So you'd like to be presented to the staff and then presented here at the council?
Absolutely.
Okay. And is everybody in agreement with that?
I concur.
But we do agree with the language except for that modification? Okay, all right. And any other questions or comments? Then if somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
As amended on item ten point nine?
Yes.
Please vote. There we go. Pass you nicely, five zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number eleven now, which is administered by, which is the City of Indio Strategic Plan Review. Mr. Nix, are you handling this for us, sir?
Yes, I am with a little bit of help. Thank you, Mayor and members of council. The city council and the city staff have been engaging the community over the last few months on updating our strategic plan with the help of Barry Dunn. So I have Matty Spencer Powers here to help us with the next stage of that. We had our full workshop with the council in April. And so this is the results of that effort and also the results of working with our city staff over the last month. So I hand it over to Matty.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you again. Good evening, Mayor and council, and thank you, John, for that introduction. As I was sitting there and reflecting on everything that you all are doing, a very exciting time here in Indio. And I hope that the strategic plan is one of those things that highlights that. And this takes you to the hundred years. So the next five years of Indio and what that looks like. So exciting things happening. What I'm going to do today is just kind of walk through what we've done so far and then our draft that your leadership team and department heads have really spent a lot of time refining over the last few weeks. Amazing leadership, amazing staff to work with, very thoughtful in what they've put together to present to you all for discussion today as well as then final adoption coming up in June. So happy to have this conversation. So what we're going to do today is review strategic planning. What does it do? Why are we here doing this? Review the engagement. Who has been involved, including external stakeholders and internal stakeholders? Review the work session notes, so what you all said in that work session and then what came out of that. I know we always said during those work sessions, these are your raw notes, this is your brainstorming and council. We took all of your words, council, and refined them with staff. And staff came up with very clear, concrete ways to see your vision and see what you want for those outcomes for the future. And that's what we'll do. We'll review the draft. It is in draft form for your review of that initial strategic plan. So what is a strategic plan? We are doing the what and moving forward. So we are focusing on what the city will prioritize for the next five years. It is a living document that guides your decision-making. So it should be mission, vision, values. Those will be the core pieces of it as well as your strategic focus areas. And then what comes after that is the change and the living document piece of it is as things are accomplished with your objectives, you move through that and kind of focusing on the strategic focus areas, what should come next after that? It is a tool for not only transparency and accountability to you all, but also to residents and reporting to them what has been happening. And then after all of this comes out, we help with implementation planning. That's the action steps, the tactical things that have to get done for this to be implemented. Plan development, who's been involved? Indio community, city staff and you all. These are the groups of folks that we've engaged with in doing all of the plan development up to this point. I always like to show this just one more time to kind of show once we get to the draft versions of this, the vision, the mission, the strategic priority and then the goal statements. So the vision is overarching. That is where you are moving towards, what you want to be and how you want to be five to ten years from now, because maybe a little bit past that hundred years and what you're focused on. Excuse me. The mission statement, this is internal and external to the organization, but is the organization's way of being. So we'll talk about that as well as strategic focus areas, which are the pillars that kind of hold that all up and the areas that you all will decide to make choices on moving forward. What sources have informed the strategic planning process? So we had extensive community and employee engagement. This included individual interviews, group interviews, focus groups, responses from community forums in person and virtual. We use a social pinpoint site, which is really a passive engagement tool to get information from people, including a survey. And then what we know about the region, what do we know about the city of Indio? What do we know about the valley? And what do we know is coming to the region that can impact you? And then part of this process, after we did the draft with all of staff, is actually reviewed all current plans that guide the organization, right? So looking at the current economic development plan, looking at the current comp plan, all the plans that already exist that kind of funnel up into the strategic plan. So a lot of those pieces you'll actually see mentioned in here as well as the yearly CIP, which is also mentioned in here and pieces of that. So a little bit of policy alignment with that to make sure that the direction you all are going is the same. This is my engagement wheel that I always like to share with everyone. We, the ways in which we worked with people, met them where they are and really helped create this plan with the community's involvement, your involvement and with staff. And this is how we sent out information for participation. These are some of those groups that we reach out to as well as some of the numbers, which is always important to see how we reached out to people. Kind of a reminder of what we talked about at the last session about what that looks like. This is the number of people who contributed. So four hundred and thirty people contributed. That means they had an active role, I call it, with it. Eight hundred people, that is information reached or engaged. Sometimes it's passive. We said that with the social pinpoint site. People went to the site, they reviewed it or social media, they saw something, they liked it, but they might have not engaged actively. We also include that as participation because they were informed, the information got to them, they decided not to participate. That is totally part of public outreach and engagement. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
When people look at this, obviously the people online, they see four hundred and thirty people, eight hundred out of a hundred thousand people. But can you explain that that's fairly pretty good?
It is. Yes. So I will say overall, we've actually had a decrease since COVID. So 2020, there's a lack of community engagement, lack of public outreach and participation. So this number for your size of community is what we have been seeing. And even the eight hundred on the informing reach is higher than we typically see. Another community I worked with close in population-wise only had about five hundred people information reached and only a hundred and twenty people actually contributed. So I want to also say that the in-person events were very high quality, right? The community forums, online and in-person, the information we got from the senior center and the teen center, very important to this process, right? The things that they had to say and what they wanted were put in here. As well as just your region in general, there's a lot of people that you partner with, that you participate with that were part of this process and gave information, which is also important to how we constructed this strategic plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So these are the four areas that we are now going to review. The mission, the vision, the core values and the strategic focus areas. The mission can be kind of boring, I like to say, as it tells people directly what you do and for whom, but it can be kind of generic. Whereas your vision is what makes Indio specific? What do you want to achieve as a community? Where are you going? What do you want to look like and feel like five to ten years from now? Values, what are the core values that the organization has to carry out its mission? The values that you'll actually see are really embedded in how staff does their work already. We heard that not only from leadership, but also from, directly from employees and frontline staff, that they are connected to these values and that's why representing them to you in this way. And then the strategic focus areas, you all brainstormed these and staff, you've all brainstormed them based off what you heard of our. And then the strategic focus areas. You all brainstormed these and staff, you've all brainstormed them based off what you heard of our, our collection of data. And then staff went and refined those, and you'll see kind of the tactical objectives that they want to do and want to achieve to help you all get there. So, with that, I will turn it to what we're reviewing. And we can do this in one of two ways, Mayor and council. You all can decide. We can do it, review everything and then go back and discuss, or we can discuss as we go, up to you all. But I'm going to take notes as we talk. Just like you see up there, we're going to write down, we're going to have a discussion and see what we could or want to change for it. So, currently, thanks, John, for the mission statement. You see the current mission statement is there at the top. The proposed mission statement is a little bit revised from what that is. What you see on the right is actually photos, is a photo, sorry, not photos, a photo of what you all brainstormed during that session. I got many colors I get to work with, which is always fun.
Hey, John, could you just move it a little bit so we can see what's getting written down, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Is it good?
And is everybody good with asking questions as we go along, or do you want to wait till it's all over?
As we go along.
Okay, so as we go along, we'll just interrupt.
I love it. Ask questions and give me your thoughts and opinions. So, mission currently is a proposed above, and the one below is what we are at right now. We provide outstanding public services to enhance the quality of life for everyone in our community. Thoughts and reactions?
Anyone?
What do you like? What do you dislike?
Ben?
I like it. I just think that we still somehow in what you have proposed, it still ends up having residents, visitors, and businesses. If it can, if can be incorporated to what you've proposing here.
Adding those three back in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What else?
I would agree.
Yeah, I, I kind of like the older one better, right? The, the previous one that has all those.
The one on top?
I mean, I think it's maybe a little bit wordy, but I agree. I'd like to see residents, visitors, and businesses included.
So, what? We provide outstanding public services to enhance the quality of life for our residents, visitors, and businesses?
In our community.
In our community.
In our community.
So, instead of saying everyone, I would put these three things in place of everyone.
Okay.
To me, if we say them, then we're committed to them rather than just in general.
Okay.
Ms. Furman, you good with that? Yep.
Great.
Okay.
So, you already did my next job for me. As I read it back out, we provide outstanding public services to enhance the quality of life for residents, visitors, and businesses in our community. Awesome. Great. Oh, let's go forward, not backwards. Okay, here's the vision. So, this one, the proposed vision statement, I think is quite fun and different than I've seen with any other community I've worked with, which I think really speaks to you all and what's important about India. So, currently, the proposed vision statement as it reads is India, the vibrant heart of the desert, where we take center stage and experience abundant opportunities to live our best life. Thoughts, reactions, likes or dislikes?
I, I like it personally.
It's action oriented.
It's action oriented?
I like the taking center stage. I mean, it's a, what we've, we've committed to do.
Experience abundant opportunities. And I'm living my best life.
There you go.
To live our best life, absolutely. And this came from a combination of all the groups, not just the city council that did it, but with staff that came up with this.
With staff, yes. So, we had a couple, we always have like five or six that we put back out, and staff really, leadership team especially, focused on this and that called out specific words to get us here, and the, the action oriented, actually what you said, Mayor Pro Temp, is why it says we and our, because people can see themselves in the vision statement, that kind of possessive piece of it.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay.
We're good. Bye. Thank you.
So, the core values. Your current core values read here. So, they are core values that you all hold dear. What we like about core values is usually having a definition afterwards to explain what that means, what it means to staff, as well as what it means to the community to do that. So, in order to make them more action oriented, we have proposed revised core values in three main areas. The polite, professional, and progressive. Now, the reason that it's worded the way it is after each one of them, if you take the first word, we, you can put it in front of every single comma in the statement. So, we maintain a friendly attitude. We listen and we explain with understanding. We treat all, all fairly and respectfully. We provide open and honest communication, and we ensure our interactions are kind and considerate. So, those are the three, and I can read out the rest of them, but I wanted to show a point of why it's written in that way for these. We can go one by one. I'd like to start with polite and see if there's any thoughts or comments about the core value polite.
Anyone?
Cowork.
Yep. Off to professional.
Professional. I won't read this one out loud, but any thoughts on professional?
It's my favorite one of all.
It's your favorite one of all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I don't like it. No, I'm teasing you.
That's true.
No, it's great. Well, thank you.
Add that in there. We have a joking attitude. And then, yes, you do. And then finally, progressive. Any thoughts about progressive?
Dream boldly.
Dream boldly. You like that? It looks good.
Well, like vision into reality.
Yeah, visions into reality.
Vision into reality.
All three of them are very well done.
Great. My one question for core values. Do you care the order in which they are? Polite, professional, and progressive.
How'd you come up with this?
In this order. I think this is actually alphabetical.
Okay.
Right?
Sophisticated.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I think that's fine. I mean, you're polite, you're professional, and you're progressive.
I like it.
Yeah?
You can't do the other two without being polite.
Yeah.
Which is being understanding, patient, caring.
Understanding, patient, and caring. Yep.
Everybody? We're good?
Great. Well, I want to thank City Manager Montgomery for these, these ones, and definitely embodied this for staff. And part of the reason that these came up was staff knows these, and really I think they do follow through and live them in their daily lives.
I think the important thing is whether you offer it or you follow it. We all have to follow the same.
Absolutely. And making decisions based off this, right? This is the core values of the organization. You all as council and of staff to make sure when actions are taken, this is how you think of it.
Yeah, and I appreciate this one. This is something you remembered, the three Ps, and that's something that City Manager brought in, and it, you could feel the spirit in, in our council. I mean, not our council, our, our staff. And, you know, even having it around city hall, and I've taken pictures of it, you know, and kept it on my phone, because this is a reminder, this is something that's just not in the city. This is, I mean, in city hall. It's the whole city. And this is something that when we have our visitors, like we just talked about, our visitors and guests and our residents, we want to be professional, polite, and progressive, especially when they come to visit us here. If they have business or if they're coming to an event. So, I love it. I mean, good job on this.
Mr. Katron?
No, I just forgot to turn my mic off.
And, and if we could, Brian, and I think we should do it, is we, is we do a lot, you, all of us do a lot of town halls and other stuff. I think we need to bring some of this stuff out and put it on some of the slides so people realize that it's just not something we put it, we do every five years and put it away. You know, this is what makes it, and kind of blend it into some of these town halls, and this is what leads us. Then we can go, this is why we, we do the water authority and, and come up with these ideas, and this is why we do the buildings, and this is how we do our police department. We follow these values, and you'll understand why as we go through the presentation. But I think we can put little pieces of all this stuff in. It would help to underscore what we're actually trying to obtain.
I think it's a great point. We don't repeat all of this as much as we should, the mission specifically. We ought to have it memorized. It's, it's easy to do.
So, when they know right off the top, this is what we're about, and here, and this is why.
Include it in our PowerPoint.
Yeah, just, just a little here and there.
There's also a way, once this comes out to, we talked about a one pager, right? It has the mission, vision, core values on it, so people know and remember what that looks like for, for the work.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you.
So, now we're going to get into what I call the meat of the, the meat of the plan, the strategic focus areas. So, these were the focus areas you all identified. A reminder about kind of the process and how we got here. You all wrote down your individual thoughts, and then we actually named the categories at the top. You'll see the thoughts underneath are what things should happen in order to get us there. And we also did a little bit of naming while we were there with council. We did a little bit refinement with staff, but all of these thoughts are actually carried over. So, I went back through with your thoughts and your outcomes and made sure there was a connection to each of them to make sure that they, they carried through. So, thinking about the strategic focus areas, the first one we're going to talk about is community safety, followed by community well-being, downtown destination, economic opportunity, public infrastructure, and organizational excellence. These are in alphabetical order, so there's no rhyme or reason for, there is a rhyme or reason for that. The one that you don't see, that was on the last slide, the colorful sticky notes, was organizational excellence. Why is that? Well, this came up when we were talking to staff. What does it mean to be a high-performing organization? How do you do that with excellent staff? So, this came out as actually as a focus area to make sure that staff were, all staff could connect to the strategic plan, both internally and externally, whereas a lot of the, the ones above, the five above, are typically externally focused. We wanted to make sure there was something internally focused that people could connect back to at the organization. So, that's why there's that specific focus area. Councilmember?
One thing I, I would want to add is sustainability into public infrastructure.
Sustainability into public infrastructure as a word?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Sustainability is, is one of the three, now would be four items to maintain?
Um, sorry.
How would you add it in there?
Develop and maintain a reliable, safe, and cost-effective infrastructure that serves the community needs. Where would you add sustainability?
Maintain a reliable, safe, and sustainable.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what I would do.
Yeah.
Okay. We're all good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay. Mr. Katron? Did you want to say something?
Yeah, under the community safety. So, after strategic planning and getting comments that I received, and I kind of thought about it, and I don't know if I mentioned it to the mayor or not, how do we not lose? I, we, I understand when you explained it to us regarding community safety, is losing police and fire and ambulance. We've invested so much, and that's what people are looking, are looking at. One of the main core values from a resident is health, parks, business opportunities for their families, and safety. And we're providing too. And I don't want to lose, because we lose it, is fire.
Okay.
Lose it. Whatever we're doing for the police department on our websites and everything else needs to be as marketed as well, because of the investments we're doing. And I, and the word is, we don't want to hide it under just community safety. We talked about community safety, would be community engagement. The crime prevention goes all the way through planning, goes all the way through. Pretty much all our services have something, component of that. And we're currently trying to create a policy to bring contractors to making sure they provide safety so they can do crime prevention. But at the end of the day, just the everyday service of the officers, the fire, the paramedics or paramec firefighters, and even one more, emergency management. With the, with the unfortunate tragedy that happened in Palm Springs, emergency management was a key role.
Absolutely.
And so, and we put a lot of investment through that. And being the largest city in the valley, how are we prepared? So, I think, I don't know how to bring those three out, but we need to add emergency management.
What if we replace proactive policing with proactive public safety? And that would kind of encompass a bit more on that end, or what do you think? Or were you looking for a separate item?
I don't know, because I think we're going to lose it.
So, I have two suggestions. I was going to say the same thing as policing, remove that and say public safety. The other thing I was going to suggest is we could call out what those specific things are. We could call out medical, fire, police. It would make the sentence extremely long, but it's, it is possible. I also want to point out, I understand your, the point of having it in the goal statement, even though it's in the objectives and people see it. So, what I can do is either take it offline and do some thought parts and come back up with one statement that kind of says, this is, we're going to list them out, and we're going to have a goal statement that gets us there, unless you all have a different recommendation for adding or removing specific words to make that possible.
Come back?
I would think you have to. This kind of may end up being a word salad with all that putting it, trying to put it in there enough here, because you're trying to add fire, EMC, and unless it came as, as, you know, public safety, I mean, I don't know how you'd get all the rest of those in there without having to reword that, so it's not some large overbearing.
I understand. I mean, we, we have, it doesn't see it, doesn't have it, and what we put into it, I mean.
Mayor and council, could I suggest that Matty continue on to show the objectives under each one, where it does contain some of that detail? And after you review that, maybe.
Maybe change it?
Yeah.
Change our view?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect.
Thanks, John. Yep. So, that's what we'll do. I'm going to move, if there's no other comments on them at high level, let's actually move to the objectives. You can see the points that are being made, and then let's come back to any of the statements afterwards.
Okay.
Okay. So, the first one, community safety. So, we're going to go into the objectives now. This is what you all said is your outcomes, that if, if this goal is achieved, or when this goal is achieved, because a lot of people like to question me on that, when this goal is achieved in five years, these are the outcomes that you want to see. Staff then took these outcomes and made specific objectives. They are listed here. And I believe community safety actually has two slides, so we'll review both of them. These are not in a particular order. They are just what came out of the meeting, and that's what has come up. They're not in alphabetical order or anything. So, let's take a moment and review these and see if there's any that you want to edit or change or need more information on.
Can we see the second set?
Yes. I'll give you all one or two minutes to read this, and then I'll move over.
That way, we, before we change these, we can see if there's anything else on the other one.
Absolutely. I'm going to move to the next one?
Please.
There we go. You all okay if I go back to the first page?
Mr. Katron? Go ahead, Oscar.
I think here is maybe the opportunity to add the, the details on the police department at the very end.
Okay.
The active role the police department, the fire department, and emergency services have in supporting the sense of security throughout our community.
We could do that, and if it is important, we can also move it up to number one. That is totally a possibility to have it the first one after the goal statement, too.
And, and then still change the proactive policing to proactive public safety in the first part.
Let's, let's talk about both of those. What are all the thoughts? I heard that would be good from council member. Anything else?
And it's, it's actually police, fire, ambulance, and emergency services, emergency management, which is our E L C and all that.
Is it fire, is it medical or ambulance?
Ambulance services.
Ambulance.
Even though it's really under the fire, because it's fire paramedics.
And then thoughts on changing the goal statement to public safety originally, instead of just policing in the title?
Can we go back to that?
Okay, please.
So, instead of community or proactive policy?
Yep, it would say promote a safe and resilient city through proactive public safety, community engagement, crime prevention, and collaborative partnerships that empower India with the opportunity to thrive.
I have an idea, because I, I mean, when you talk about proactive policing, that, that does strike a chord with a lot of people and keeping the community safe. So, I, I, I would err on keeping proactive policing. We talked a lot about that today, right? A lot of preventative work in policing. That's proactive policing, not reactive. And in the world of law enforcement, you hear proactive versus reactive, but community safety, what about changing that to public safety?
You could change community safety to public safety. I also had a thought as you were talking. You could also say promote public safety by being a safe, resilient city through, and then go through the rest of it. So, you could add public safety at the beginning, too, and then do it by or through, throughout the end.
I like, I like police, public safety, because it just says, okay, this is our, our public safety. Now, we're going to talk public safety now. Police, fire, you know, all first responders. I, I, I like that, instead of just.
Instead of community?
Yeah, I like public safety. Yeah, I like public safety.
I heard that from one, two, three, four. Okay, we're good?
Plus, councilmember Ortiz's recommendations.
Oh, yes, so that will, and then we'll change community safety to public safety. That would, I do have a question then about order, because if we continue with the order of alphabetical, that would then be last. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Or do we want to, to change the order of these? I'm, either way is okay, but I want to raise that as a change.
I, I think that's important, I think that's what, that's important, that's what people look at, look for in a community, I think that's what we stand for, I think that's what we embody. So I don't mind if it's not in alphabetical order.
It's not in alphabetical order, no. O is, P is before O.
There, there you go.
Oh, that's correct, yeah.
I concur with, I support.
Thank you for that. So we would put public safety number one?
Yep.
It is number, it's our number one obligation. So leave it on top, and then the rest of it, put an alphabetical order.
And I could do that by moving organizational excellence up.
It's the most, it is the most investment that we have.
Seventy million dollars worth.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Emergency management's important, because that's the growing trend of being prepared.
Yeah, emergency preparedness and management, both, right? Both banned.
You have like, I got an email today, perfect example. The folks were, hey, where are you going?
He's retired now.
All right, our city treasurer is leaving us.
He took his, he took his cash bags.
Yeah, I, we get emails, and I got one today, you know, folks moving to the city. They want to hear our, our, you know, our plans and our objectives and goals for public safety and emergency response. So that's something that drives people in, you know, because we are a safe community. So when they open this up and look at it, I want them to see public safety bad, this is what their, their vision is. So that's why this is an important item.
Let's go back to the objectives. Are there any other thoughts about the objectives? I do have the one thought from councilmember Ortiz for the last one to add all of the above. Any other thoughts on the objectives? Any other questions or clarifications needed?
I think we're good.
Okay. Public safety, check. The next one, originally called health and wellness. What we did with health and wellness, we broadened it a little bit, and so it could include other things that you all talked about for outcomes that are important. So this one is community well-being. So these are the first, this is the first slide for community well-being, and there's actually a second as well for the objectives. There's ten total objectives for community well-being. Okay, next one?
Wait, hang on a minute, I guess I have a comment.
Sure.
And the first one, ensure parks and green spaces are the first well-maintained.
Mm-hmm.
To me, when, when we have to say that, that feels like they're not. I guess I don't, I don't, I mean, I think, I, I think that's a given, right? I mean, we need to make sure that, that they're well-maintained, but I'm not sure we need to use those terms or those words to call it out in the first bullet.
Well, I think they're trying to say that we will well-maintain, that we remember it. I mean, it's like renovating the lights at golf course with a new clubhouse. We already built a clubhouse, so we are established in it as the home of the first tee, which we are, to increase community use of facility, which we're hoping to do, but we also need to invest in the golf course. So I think it's little hits that we'll make to kind of go through. I mean, ensuring our parks are, spaces are well-maintained. I hate to say it, but they're not well-maintained.
How about another word, like, beautifying? Beautiful, beautified, I don't know, that's probably not even a real word.
Beautify is, yes.
About well ma, how about maintain a standard, a quality standard?
Okay.
That's inviting, that's.
I just feel like I don't want, I don't want to call out a blemish, you know, or I don't want people to come back and say, well, I.
I think we should, I'm the opposite, I think we should, because if it's not, then people can call us out, saying you said you were going to have well-maintained parks, and you don't. So what, what are you going to do to change it?
That's one of the reasons I mentioned during our session, that we need to have a park master plan, like we have a youth master plan, that guide to maintain that quality that we are expecting to have.
I, I agree that we probably should do it, as long as we can figure out the funding of what comes out. Never, never start a project you can't finish, or that they'll call you out on. I mean, so if we're going to do it, we got to put, be willing to put money into it. Mr. Ortiz?
I, I think it looks okay, maybe not being the first sentence that comes out, maybe a little bit down. I think the, the lights golf course, it's one of many projects that we have, so should we make that something more general? Because it, it just stands out a bit much to me, and we have so many other projects going on, like the sports park and improving our other parks. I'm just like, maybe that should be a bit more general, and because we're doing so much more than that.
Right, and, and really, the sports parks, you know, are really for a larger portion of the community as well, or certainly a certain segment.
And the sports park, what do we, how, what, we got to be at ninety percent now? Pretty close? I mean, I saw the work they're doing, they're gangbusters, it's looking good.
We can, again, we need to have a, a service plan that we worked in incorporating.
Yeah. I, I can, I concur, or we had another bullet to talk about the other stuff we're doing.
And that is listed down in infrastructure. Yeah, this one is specifically called out for community well-being, but there's other ones listed in infrastructure. John, did you have a comment?
Yeah, if well-maintained isn't the best word, maybe we could replace it with high quality. So I'm sure parks and green spaces are high quality.
I got that.
I, I'm done for the day, guys.
He said that about three times already, I'm sure.
They're going to still call us out.
I will look at the other ones, too, for the golf course, and I will concur with staff about what other ones we could mention or to make it more general. I mean, a lot of them are mentioned down in infrastructure.
Yeah, I think the well-being part of it was just so that the community get out, because that's saying more usage, with that comes community well-being, so I understand that part.
And it could be increased use of any facility, right? There could be a reword, a rewording of this to make it that, and then use the golf course one and actually move it down to infrastructure, because it is an infrastructure need, too.
Yeah, and maybe outdoor facilities could be more, the more general term.
Oh, I haven't quite gotten there.
Oh, six hundred?
Six hundred?
Uh, there's, there's quite a few.
We're going to do something.
Any other thoughts or comments on community well-being? Okay.
Is, one, one quick question, oh, this is the second part.
This is the second part.
Never mind.
Yep.
Let me, let me read it first, before I put my foot in my mouth. Because there it is, there's a recreation district, never mind.
I, I like the first one, like, so I have to give kudos to our marketing team. Our, our social media has evolved over the last few years, and it's, it's, it's getting good. So that's a perfect one right there as well.
Any other thoughts on the second half?
No, it looks good to me. Expanding knowledge.
Ensure communication of services reach outside the city, I think that wording's.
The ending, you don't like the wording of the ending?
Yeah, help ensure communication of services reach outside the city.
Okay.
A little awkward.
Yep. I'm going to put awkward, and I will update.
Cool.
I'll go back to my original notes of what the intent was, too.
Okay.
Do we want to say, and do we want to say particularly for our underserved population, instead of just particularly for underserved?
Yeah.
Councilmember Ortiz, I think on the last bullet, the idea was that we would market, you know, NDL to, you know, the whole state, the United States, kind of get, get on the map, you know? So that was the, the idea behind that, but we can work on the wording.
And it might be needs of community services might not be part of the reach, right? It might be just the way we look at that objective. Yep.
Interesting.
Okay, any other thoughts on the second part of community well-being?
Do you have someone there for our center stage? I mean, with a community well-being, you use it, you know, we use it for more than just that. Concerts, you know, a lot of it's people getting out of the house that never would, some of it's other performance. We're doing music now, but like you said, we're maybe yoga, Pilates, other stuff, where somebody's sitting on the stage and doing it out to the people.
We do, so it's not listed as an objective, but it's listed as a performance measure to report on an objective. So the objective reads, increase awareness of opportunities at center stage by communicating offerings to all.
Okay.
Uh, in the DRD one, do we want to say to enhance programming for all ages, especially our seniors and youth?
Yep, we can say all ages, and then like a comma.
Yeah.
Seniors and youth, okay?
Maybe, does that sound okay?
All-encompassing?
Yeah, because I feel like we're leaving everybody else right there.
I know.
I was going to say, that's what I usually say, is intergenerational programming.
That's impressive.
That's an expensive word.
It's the, it's your power title.
Sell it to you guys. Sorry, I commandeered it from Madison Road.
You're great, you're great.
He had a Red Bull before this.
You can take it.
Yes, he did.
Anything else?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. So downtown experience is the next one. We've heard a lot about town town, we know that there's a, uh, energy around it. So to continue that energy, here are some of the objectives for downtown. To make it a destination, a place to be. And again, there's ten objectives, so there's a second slide.
Do we, do we have anything in there, city manager, for like art and that, too? I mean, it was one of the big things we're doing, we just added some more. I mean, that's one big thing, you know, that bring people downtown and the objective destination. It's got to be more than just food and that, because that's not daily, but you can always see art. It is, it is becoming with our stuff, and as we do more of it, from where it came from, as people see that, and they get the art goes through. And I, and I do agree with you on a hotel, I do think a nice boutique hotel would be, but if we're going to plan to do that, then we really need to find a space that we're going to do and market that space, because if not, they're just going to get eaten up, even if it's just buying another space, because it's going to need to be put in a strategic location, so it can be utilized the rest of the services. So something we'll have to think of very shortly, instead of maybe selling it to a housing project, might be a boutique hotel. I mean, housing's great, but if you're going to get a hotel, it's got to be strategically located. You can't put it down by the, the post office or something, it just wouldn't have the same feel that the internal is.
Yeah, I was going to say maybe something a little bit more general than hotel.
Than a hotel, right.
Yeah, because it could be a hotel, it could be, I don't know, a different type of hospitality, yeah.
So more of a hospitality place than just a hotel? And I ask because your strategic plan objectives want to be focused enough so that you can tell staff, go after a hotel, or think about that.
I think hotel for us is all-encompassing, but, but when we see it written here, it's, it's just the opposite. So I think what we're trying to say is, is a place for visitors to come and stay, whether it's a boutique, a hotel, I don't know.
Little mini resort or something, yeah.
Whatever, yeah.
Something that they can, I like, brings people in, small conference area that people bring in to do stuff. Kind of like a Monterey, where you have all the stuff around it, you can just kind of enjoy yourself and have small boutique things, if you get bigger than you can go to Fantasy Springs or somewhere else.
Leave it open for options.
Or a college.
That's right, right, yeah.
Lodging, ah, there you go.
And one last thing.
Sounds like travel host.
I got a few grammar edits.
Yeah, I was, okay, we're fine.
Yeah, just one last one. And then, Brian, what about our, our, our transportation center? I mean, that'll be a large part of this. Do we have anything in here in this or infrastructure that has a transportation center as a main focus point?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Can we go back to the first slide?
Yeah.
Yes, and I do want to make a comment on the art. The art is not mentioned, so I've added a note to add an objective specifically about art.
Yeah, we just got the new butterfly one for, you know, Desi.
Desi.
You know, I mean, that's just things people love to see and read the story and hear the.
Yeah, the robots.
Her journey.
It feels like, it feels, there are a couple of things that feel awkward. Are you looking at the same thing, you know, Oscar? Increase mixed-use development for downtown to be consistently interesting destination for family outings.
I, I would say to be a consistent destination.
Yeah.
To be a consistent destination?
Do we need the word consistent? To be a destination? I feel like, I feel like we need, it is a destination. Increase mixed-use development for downtown to be a destination.
Destination?
Or.
Attractive destination instead of consistently interesting?
To be a destination, yeah.
Just to be a destination.
Okay, so remove consistently interesting.
Get that day, there's always something new.
The real downtown, the real old.
But I mean, if you come on Friday, you get food truck Fridays, you come on a Saturday, you could get something else. You get on a Monday, you could go down and have coffee, or sit there and look at the art. I mean, it'll change as you're going along, depending on what day you get there.
Or go to school.
Or, or go to school. Improve, the other one is improve the activities and programs downtown throughout the day to encourage attraction.
Yep.
I don't know, I just feel like that feels awkward to me.
Um, let me tell you a little bit about why, and then you can tell me how you want to change it. So throughout the day, so that's giving morning, midday, and evening opportunities, so anyone could come at any, at any period of the day.
I, I agree with the concept, I just think there might be a simpler way of wording it.
I'll work on it.
Instead of throughout the day, I mean, I, I guess I want to replace that with daily. I, I guess I, I kind of like fewer words. Yeah, through the activities and programs.
So I don't know if it's a daily attraction, what, what they were trying to get at.
I see what you're saying, you're absolutely right.
It's more the time of day, so let me work on the time of day piece. And we could even say morning, lunch, and evening opportunities, right, or activities.
Too wordy, I see what, where you're seeing it, I just feel like there's a better way to say it.
I probably have a better way of saying it somewhere written down, so I'll find it. Other thoughts? Anything you think is missing from this area?
The encourage attraction part, does that sound right to you guys?
It, it, it's just, it's in the wrong place.
Is there one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nope, there's one more.
All right, see this.
So I will work on that entire objective throughout the day, which, and then this is the second part. So for this one, there's a total of ten as well. I feel like there's a theme.
I don't know about the third one, it'd just kind of be a safe place for people to gather, to be thriving downtown.
I think that's already stated, we want the whole city to be safe.
Right.
Yeah, I know, but it makes it sound like it's not safe.
It's safe, exactly.
That is a bad part of it, be safe, you know, like, yeah, we're working on making sure it's safe. I understand what you're trying to do, it's just I don't think it's worded right. Have a safe, you know, need to have a safe environment for people to.
I don't even think we need to say that, because it is.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, that's why I said that, if not, then, what was the reason behind it?
This one was a, just to continue the, the thought of downtown. We know that we want the entire community to be safe, but are there action steps that can be taken specifically in downtown to help support it, right? There's a security guard, is there more visibility? Is there something about downtown to help encourage people to come out and be, be there? Staff, anything to add on either of those?
How about just a gathering thriving downtown for your friends and family?
If I may, we can change safe with maybe welcoming.
Yeah, something like that, and I understand where they come from, but we will eventually have police officers either on segways, bikes, whatever, horse.
Right, and that's.
Something to go through the command.
The reason, the reason that objective came up.
Idea.
The reason that objective came up.
Horse rescue, we can use their horses as a partner.
There you go.
The reason that objective came up was for those tactical measures, right? So that you can point back to a point in the strategic plan that says, here's the objective, and here's why we're doing it, but I can see what you mean for the entire, public safety thought of the entire city. We can change and edit that.
Yep.
I think if you just make it a point that it's a place that's thriving downtown for your family and friends, that, that means, that's already said, it's like, you go to Disneyland, you don't talk about safety. You go to Disneyland and have fun. Disneyland's never.
You just assume it's going to be safe, because it has been.
Yeah, that's where we want it.
That's the last thing, I think.
Because where do you go to Disneyland? With your family and friends.
Right.
I just think somewhere in there, I know it says create opportunities for entertainment options.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we got, we got to name center stage in there. We got to name center stage somewhere in there, and also, you know, we have the College of the Desert, you know? That's part of downtown, so education, what, what do we have? One of these where we could put education in there.
And I'm looking at the fourth bullet, again, the last phrase is awkward. Continue to invest in the beautification. Continue to invest in the beautification of downtown buildings, streetscaping, and overall look at appearance of downtown.
Oh, overall look and appearance of downtown.
I, I guess, I, I kinda feel like everything has a tail of, of negative. Continue to invest in the beautification of downtown buildings and streetscaping, or whatever words we wanna use, period. I mean, I guess, I, I'm.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I agree.
It looks like they expanded to make the sentence longer.
I just, yeah, let's make it short and sweet, right.
I think it goes back to maintain the quality. The quality, the appearance.
Sure.
The nice.
And that's what it says, invest, continue to invest in the beautification of downtown.
Continue to, continue to have a welcoming.
Beautification of downtown.
By the streetscape.
And overall look.
Overall look.
Welcoming.
Maybe just overall appearance of downtown.
Yeah. Or continue to invest in the beautification of downtown, period.
Yeah.
Downtown has buildings, has streetscaping, has all of that. That's, you don't, you don't have a beautification of downtown, you don't have a downtown without buildings, or without streetscaping, or anything else. Continue to invest in the beautification of downtown.
The reason, I, I, I get where you're going, and the, but the reason you call out those specifics is so when someone picks this up, there's, there is an assumption, right, that building and streetscaping and the beautification are called out for the, so that what happens, right? So you invest in the beautification of downtown, so that what happens? So if you can get to the, so that underneath, underneath it, helps with the action items for staff to know, hey, you're actually focused on buildings and street ca- escaping, and the appearance and the beautification of it.
I'm not speaking for Ms. Holmes, but I'm, I'm understanding her viewpoint. Being that we struggled a good part of twenty years to pull out the negativity.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That we didn't have when it was established, we just went through a phase, and it just hits those marks with our local communities in the valley.
Okay.
So that's, I think that's the way I look at it, it's just, it just keeps giving us that. To the person that just drops in, like people from all over the world for concerts, it doesn't make a beat, but locally, they're three, here at three sixty-five, so I see the point.
So it's removing the overall look and appearance of downtown, that part of the sentence, that is the troubling piece, correct?
I think it's the way it's worded.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, it's the word.
It's the aura that some of them give off, it says continue to invest, um, how about celebrate?
I, I work on celebrate the beautification.
That celebrate says, okay, this is what we already have, this is a quality that we have, instead of this is something that we have, but it needs work, and we're gonna continue to work on it.
So maybe this entire section, look at it from a different lens of not the negative that I'm hearing, it has a feeling of, and looking at it of, it is how it is, and the positive nature that comes out of that, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, that would be my perspective, but I wanna pull myself back and say, the purpose of the strategic plan is so that we have a roadmap. Staff has a roadmap, right?
Keep it going forward.
Right, and so, um, so I, 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 I think with that in mind, maybe I.
It's really to keep us on track, to make sure we keep doing the stuff we're doing.
I just think of when, when this is published, or when this is out in the world, I, I just wanna reduce the.
And I think there's, we're telling them that we're encouraging, these are the things we're encouraging them to do, and make sure we continue to do them, I, I agree with that. I mean, the thing that stands out about me, I've been in NDO forty years now, and it used to be the place you had to live.
Hmm.
And now it's the place you wanna live. It's different.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you used to be here because it was the working people, or it was the cheapest houses, or it had this and that. And now, I, I can't tell you how many people that live in it, that come to our community and say, I would've never thought I would live in NDO, and I'm so proud of it now. And you hear that more and more and more.
All the time.
Hmm.
And so, like I said, now they wanna live in it, so, and it's a good testament to everything that's being done.
Or having realtors recommend there rather than here, now it's here rather than there.
Yeah.
Yeah, back, instead of, you know, for years it was the issue of, the realtors would say, you don't wanna live, you don't wanna live in NDO. You don't wanna go past La Quinta. We battled that for years and years and years, and I, I think because some of us have been around long enough, we, we remember that, and so we're, I, I think we just need to be careful that we have a somewhat of a positive, but we still need to create that roadma- roadmap for staff.
Yep, and we can do it in a, in a way that makes it maybe more neutral wording, to be able to help with that.
As long as we keep the objectives, so we keep on what, what we need to get done. And I think Andrew can tell the same thing, we play a lot of pickleball over there, and a lot of our friends talk about all the events. We were at your Soto Festival, we came out for your Food Truck Friday, we're this and that. I mean, people that would've never thought about coming here from, everywhere from Palm Springs all the way back, make a point to let us know once you find out you're part of the city, wearing their hat or whatever else.
Yeah.
That they came all the way down, they were so impressed with what they see.
Yeah, NDO's a destination now.
Yeah, I, I think I would be okay with it just being, and the overall appearance of downtown at the end.
Right.
And, and the overall appearance of downtown, shortens it up a little bit, it's pretty straight to the point. I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
Um, the other one, the first bullet, uh, unique to downtown NDO, I think would sound a little better, more consistent with our usual wording.
Yeah, that's good, good catch.
I need you to repeat that, cause I was taking a note.
Um, in the first bullet point, just, uh, switch around, um, NDO and downtown, to be downtown NDO. Just a little more consistent with our other wording.
And are we capitalizing the D in downtown? I mean, I think we should, but I think we need to be.
From a marketing.
Whatever would be consistent, we would do all of it, I'm seeing Miguel nod, so we'd go through and everything would then be capitalized.
So whenever it's downtown, NDO.
It's the place to be, that's right, downtown.
Downtown, like some of them are saying thriving downtown.
They made a song about downtown, yes.
Yeah, you could add every time, if you wanted to, from a marketing perspective, downtown NDO for every single time it's mentioned.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
I guess what, I'm good.
Downtown destination. Moving on. Economic opportunity, or what was called economic development in your work session. There we go. Then for this one, there are also ten objectives, so there are two slides. So this is the first one, let me know when you're ready to move to the second, or if you have thoughts and comments first.
And, and, I mean, I think someone just worded, the way it's like on the sec- on the second one, it says, variety of job types for residents and increase city revenues, it shouldn't be for residents to increase.
To?
For residents to increase city revenues.
Um.
I mean, cause it says, and, it just seems out of place, type of jobs for residents and increase city revenues.
I think there's, so there's twofold in this, there's two pieces, it is to increase job re- or job types, and increase city revenues, but I see what you're saying.
Well, you got it, you got one and business employment, and base and create, and residence and increase.
This might be one where we can split it up and make it two separate objectives, where I see create a variety of jobs for residents and increase city revenues, that can be its own, it, its own objective.
Yeah. It's a little wordy, a little too broad for that, but I understand what you're saying.
Yep.
Third, uh, bullet point, just adding an S to corridors. I think Highway one eleven and in, in, NDO Boulevard corridors?
I think Boulevard corridor was one corridor.
Oh, gotcha.
It's one place.
Not a corridor.
One, Highway one eleven could be considered a corridor, you could put, put both, I think, I see how you're reading it, you could be both. Yep.
I think the rest was good.
I'll add the not comment on number two and. I'm gonna switch the slide though, right now, so here's the second half. Thoughts or comments on these five?
On the second one, instead of using the city twice, I would say to encourage and promote a business-friendly environment.
A business-friendly environment, okay. Other thoughts and comments?
Um, I, I digressed earlier from my comment about education, you have it out here, so.
We do, but we could call it out in, in multiple places.
Okay, thank you.
So that's up to you.
No, this is good, yeah.
So you can do it more than once, then, it's okay?
I'm sorry?
You mention it more than once, it's.
Yep, you can, so I wouldn't say you need to mention like the specific things more than once, like we don't need to mention the golf course twice, but we can mention it in multiple places, because COD is downtown, you can mention it downtown as a point, um, of, of it is in downtown.
So when, when you take ec- economic opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
That's through the, the whole city, so you're, you put in education, you're putting all of it in there, and so, the opportunities that persist, and did we limit it to a certain amount, to highlight just the, the main ones? Cause I mean, we could go on and on and on.
That's why it's focused, so that's why there's tens of objectives, is these are the things we wanna accomplish in the next five years in these specific areas, and then the implementation plan will actually be those action steps, so what staff is gonna take to get you there.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, in bullet one, I would just change the county to Riverside County.
Oh, okay, call out?
Yeah.
Yep, I can do that.
And when we, uh, finish with this thing, we're gonna take a quick five-minute break.
Absolutely.
If we finish this actual objective, please.
This is the second one, so if there's no more thoughts on economic opportunity?
Okay, any, any questions on economic opportunity, anyone? Okay, then we're gonna take a five-minute recess. All righty, everyone, thank you for indulging us on that quick break. We'll move back into our administrative item, which is the City of India Strategic Plan Review. Please continue.
Great, so we are going to move on to our fifth area, so we have two left. Um, we're going to move on to public infrastructure. So these are your thoughts from public infrastructure that came up. And for public infrastructure, there are also ten objectives, so there'll be two slides. However, there are many more performance measures to help support this that you'll see. So this is the first one for public infrastructure. And I will note in the final version of the plan, CV link will be spelled out and ADA will be spelled out and then put in parentheses. CV link is? That is, okay. Any thoughts, comments? Mayor Protim?
What?
I have one that since we're renaming the transportation center, do we want to call it by its name or just Indian Transportation Center?
Hmm.
I think transportation center until we get into it, because we don't know exactly what it's all going to be. Is this going to be the building, is it going to be housing, going to be a train station? But, I mean, I'm good either way. And, and do we need to say continue to develop the plans, or should we say start to implement the plans? I mean, should we push it further across?
More action. Implement. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we are further along than what it makes it sound, looks like we're trying to do it, but we're really ready to go if we can get the feds and everybody else to give us where the train platform and that needs to go, so we can start moving.
And then on the second, the second one and the last one, the sequence is maintain the pavement management systems. Is it supposed to be plural, it's my first question?
Mm-hmm.
Um, to provide roads and good driving conditions for all, do we need for all? Maintain our, our pavement management system.
And you're putting driving condition for all, do you think it should be conditions?
Yeah, I don't think we need for all, I mean, it could be driving condition to provide, to provide safe driving, because how do you quantify to provide roads and how do you quantify good driving conditions?
Yep, so the, the, the way that this is managed, and I can, I can look over here just to confirm, but PCI, um, pavement conditioning index is how it's measured.
Yep.
Um, but I see what you mean, that is how you would also measure the good driving condition. Um, and we can remove for all and it is system, not systems.
And then the last one, maintain clean, safe and welcoming parts through effective maintenance, security measures and custodial services to enhance part utilization. I guess I'd put that at the beginning, enhance park utilization by maintaining, and how do we do that? By maintaining clean, safe and welcoming parts, that's, I would just, otherwise it sounds like custodial services are going to enhance park utilization.
My comment to that, to add that to the Mayor Protim would be custodial services to enhance park and parkways. Because parkways are landscape, right? Um, decorative most of the time, but passive, but then you have our parks, which will later roll into our park master plan that we should be putting as one of our goals to get done.
So let me understand this correctly, parks and parkways?
Yes.
Okay.
I kind of actually like it the way the Mayor Protim said, enhance park utilization by maintaining clean, safe and welcoming parks through effective maintenance, security measures and custodial services.
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, that sounds better to me where it's just straight up.
Yep, moving it to the beginning. Great.
Yeah.
And do you want me to add parks and parkways to that sentence?
Because there is a clear definition between parks and parkways. I just looked it up before, I wanted to be sure.
Yes, there is.
That's fine.
Yep. Okay. Let's move on to the second one. Anything here?
The good thing is you have build new electrical substations at the top, that's a big part.
Yeah. That's a big initiative.
I'll maybe just add the S on substations.
Substation. Build new electric substations.
Yep.
Good point.
What are you adding, Brian, I'm sorry you missed it. Dunedin scene?
So they enhance the shade trees and canopy to promote city walkability.
Enhance canopy, tree canopy?
Tree, I think we need to have the scripter in front of canopy, yes.
Tree canopy?
To promote city walkability.
Mm-hmm.
And if we have tree canopy, we don't need shade trees.
Yeah, or the shade structures in Jackson.
Was that what they are? I thought they were traffic coming. Everybody's slowing down trying to figure out what it is. Good job, Tim.
Watch out on my shade structures.
They're traffic, they're traffic coming.
So for this one, would it read enhance tree canopy to promote city walkability?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So remove, yep.
Think we're good there.
But that's not the only purpose for a tree canopy, but I guess we probably don't want to go down that path, but, um, I mean, a tree canopy.
Yes, everything.
Encompasses a wider range. Encompasses a wider range.
But I think we're trying to get some walkability so that actually does it. Because it's for economics, for the environment, I mean, you could go on and on and on.
Right. Well, there's a lot of things that lead to it, but if you are more walkable, then what happens, right? Yeah.
Exactly.
I think that's why we ended up with walkability for that reason.
Yep.
Okay. Good with public infrastructure. Any thoughts or comments?
No, I think we're good.
Final one, so this is organizational excellence. There are no thoughts and comments that you all had because this came up from staff. So this is what we are proposing for the internal one for organizational excellence, and they are 11. So there are two slides again.
Yes, Mr. Gattron.
The only thing I don't see unless I'm missing something, it was the presentation their HR director did, which retention. Retention.
So this one came up in, there's objectives that mention retention specifically in three different ways to measure what it is, and it goes to number. I think it's actually...
I just don't see the word.
Yeah, I have one. I don't see the word either, but I know which one it was connected to.
It's always could be foster and attract with the goal of retention, longevity.
I think we were doing that with number three, which is create talent pipelines. I think that's why the objective came in, but we can add one that specifically calls out fostering.
To attract and retain candidates.
That's a good one, too.
To number three or to a new objective?
Uh, maybe to number three.
Okay.
Just modify.
Yeah.
Nah.
Candidates versus applicant, or applicants? Here one.
Well, because some people might be within, if we're talking about retention, some people might be already within the organization. So those still be applicants?
Promotion and candidates. That's a good point.
Brian, what is developed strategy to support employee well-being? What would that be, programs?
Mm-hmm.
Education? And I didn't see anything in here, but do you have something on, I see the increase of training and development, but is that, when you say, does that have educational parts to it?
Yes.
To make sure, you know, I mean, degrees, you know, if people want to go, if someone wants to be an engineer or wants to do something. Okay.
If training is all encompassing for that.
Yeah, because I know the chief wants to be able to get all of his staff hopefully one day to be all, have bachelor's degrees. So, I mean, it's a lofty goal, but I've been saying still, we get some good employees that want to spend an extra time at night to go to college, we should encourage it.
Well, post has been dealing with that, which is going to push out a pool of people just getting out to do it. If they join the service, they still won't be, when they're old enough, they come back, they're too busy being, protecting the country. If they don't take advantage of the ongoing education in the service, so it puts a big link.
Hmm, interesting. Anything on this we need to change?
I'll go to the next one, too.
Yep.
Anything here? Little thing? Oh, okay.
Anything? Go ahead.
I would just say, change on the second one, to use data to inform, I would say and use data to inform.
Okay.
Right. Brian, do we have anything for, I didn't see, maybe I missed it, I apologize, anything on our commissions? I mean, because we really need to utilize them and, and train them to be able to help us, it's the support of that. The more, like the planning, for it's a good example. You know, they have so much involved with it, how do we get them to get more information or training to understand, you know, kind of like some of the other ones where, you know, it, there's you can and can't, and you can't do that unless we're giving them more support. And a lot of these planning commissioners, they're not experts in planning. They're well-met, meaning people that are learning on the go, but, you know, this is why you have to do this or this and that. So, and even some of the other ones on the park commission to get them more engaged and going out and playground safety stuff and that. At least give them the opportunities to be that, maybe you never know, it could be one day it could be good employees or something else, but...
Well, our community services have some basic skills, because it's more than just parks, it's supposed to be facilities, buildings, public access.
It's just like all of us, we all had to learn. You know, I didn't know anything about buses or that, it's all stuff you had to learn as you're going along and be putting on committees. But, I mean, they have some big responsibilities. I mean, some of them, especially, you know, our public gardeners, you're talking millions of dollars we spend every year. Planning commission are making decisions that, you know, they got to make it for the best interest of the community and really understand it. So I think the more training, the more opportunities we can do with the commissions would help us and help staff so that they're, they understand what they're doing.
You could do equip staff and commissioners with the essential, blah, blah, blah.
City commissioners.
Yeah.
How we want to do it, I just think we really need to focus on them, I think we can get a lot more out of them. And I think if we give more training and more support to them, we might get more candidates that actually want to come and be a part of it. You know, if they really can get some more skills out of, really feel that they're making a difference and not rubber stamping something instead of doing it.
Yeah, Mary make an excellent point, we heard from our youth advisory committee, you know, we talked about interns earlier. So maybe we have a separate point about commissioners, committee members, volunteers, there were quite a few volunteers in our police department that do the Indian Liddo. So maybe there's a, there are folks that, you know, take their own time to help out the city staff, help out the city council, improve the community. So that's part of our organization as a whole to help us run.
Yeah, just think it'd be great to be able to get them more engaged and more educated on what they're actually voting on.
Training.
Training.
Training, and doesn't League of Cities have training? I mean, do we need to make that mandatory?
Yeah.
I mean, for some of the commissions, there is, there is training. I think we need to, you know, ensure that our commissions attend.
Evaluating current classes that staff have to see if those opportunities are able for commissioners and volunteers. Most does that all the time. Police officer standard training doesn't just police officers, it's support staff, volunteers, it's a whole gamut of certifications.
We can have a, just a bullet about providing support for our committee members, commissioners, volunteers, you know, because we have like our cert people, you know, that are here as well.
And I think as we, we have more of these meetings that are out here too, like the League of Cities, if they have something that's on planning or somebody's coming out to speak or something, we should invite them as a, give them an opportunity to come out. You're talking a, you know, forty or fifty dollar ticket to be able to come out and listen to somebody that's in on that. Same with parks or something else, really hear what other people are doing. So, just my two cents.
Yeah, we will add an objective around that. Great.
Perfect. Anything else?
Questions? Do you all want to go back to the beginning and look at just the strategic focus areas, the topic, the sentences that we said we were going to do? The goal statements, these?
Yeah, going back, simple, make a decision.
We said we were going to re-look at these.
I think it's very well done, though. I think the, the combination of staff and, and the council's input have brought some great highlights to move the city forward, so.
I think.
Thank you for your, your work.
Thank you.
I believe that what you've gathered tonight, you can go back and update these, because there's certain things you can plug in, like how it was recommended by Councilman William Furman with the community safety, you went to public safety. So there's little bullet points, you can streamline that.
Yeah.
You're good with them doing it for us. I mean, we can word salad the same, but I think you, a fresh eyes looking at this is probably better than us.
Yeah, what I'll do is every note that you've all taken, we'll actually go into the updated version of this initial plan. And that is what we'll bring back to you for final adoption.
Okay.
We're good.
Let me ask you this, this is what you do, what's your grade on how we're progressing right now?
Oh, fantastic, honestly, so I was telling staff the other day, and I'll tell you all, very engaged staff, very engaged council. You all know what you want for the community and what you want for the city, and where you all are, and you know where you are as an organization and organizational excellence. If you think of the whole spectrum, you're a high-performing organization and this is one of the reasons why. And your progress towards making this is, is excellent.
I think the staff and council as a whole, I mean, we, we're all diverse in our way, we all think differently. But when it comes to the city, I think from staff on, from council all the way down to staff and that, it's all about the city. We make our best choices based on what we really have in front of us, how we think. And I don't think there's many times that some of us would take anything we voted back, really think it out, you really believe that that's how it should be, and that's why we vote. And then we move on.
Mm-hmm. Great, well, thank you all, so that's all I was going to say for next steps, we'll take all this thoughts that you have back, we'll create a new draft and it'll come to you for final adoption in June.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll move, we'll move on to item number 12, which is public comments for items not on the agenda, is there anything? Paulina, anybody or anybody that likes saying that?
No, there are no comments, mayor.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn to our next meeting at eight thirty-two to June four twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. Please keep the people in Palm Springs in your thoughts, and if there's any way we can be able to help them, please know that we will. I did talk to Mayor DeHart, told him that the city of India is here to help it anyway. Good night, all of you, God bless.